Welcome to the Byram Hill Board of Education meeting for April 17, 2018. And we invite you to stand and join us in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. It's great to see you all, thank you for coming tonight. In addition to our regular board business, we have a few special reports that we're going to get to hear from in a little while. We're joined by some of our students and some of our teachers. We're going to hear from Science Olympiad, we have budget hearing for, and we have our athletic facility review. We are joined by Jason Company and our Director of Operations and Facility and our Athletic Director. But first, for the record, I opened the meeting at 7:10 and we went right into executive session to discuss item 3.1, which was Negotiations Matter BHTA, 3.2 Negotiations Matter CSEA, 3.3 A District Matter Succession Planning, 3.4 Board of Education Matter Succession Planning. At this time, are there any comments from the public of any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. There is one change to the agenda before we approve the agenda. We're just going to move up one item, which was 11.2, which is Review of Policy Second Read 5280 Athletics. We're just going to move that up to before item nine, which is our first special report. It won't take long, but we need to move that one item up. With that change, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Some would.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and I should note for the record that we're down two board members. Scott Levy and Larry Stengel cannot be here tonight, but we still have a quorum, so we're good.
They've each been fined $50.
Exactly. And can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for the evening for Personnel, Special Services, and Business?
Some would.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor? And I just want to highlight two items that we just approved on consent agenda, 8.1 and 8.2. They were acceptances of donations from the PTSA and from the Bobcat boosters. $1,500 from each of them, and that was put toward a motivational speaker at HCC. So we thank them and we thank everybody that contributed to that. Okay. And let's see. So now, we are going to bring up that one item that I talked about. And it is, can I have a motion to approve as a second read, Policy 5280 Athletics?
Some would.
In a second. Okay, now, this is the policy on the athletic placement process that we had talked about at our last meeting. And John, did you want to just, I like that we touched on that.
Sure. Some of the changes that we made were really defining athletic placement process for a seventh and eighth grade student to a person who wasn't familiar with why we were looking at this policy. It wasn't really apparent what that athletic placement process was. Tim did a deep dive exercise of going and finding the language to support that. So that is the most material change here, that paragraph right after.
Yeah, I have to say, you got all, everybody, you know, whose comments, I feel you did a great job on that.
I echo that. I thought Tim did a great job on that policy and you made it very easy to vote for.
And you know, Scott's not here, but I did talk to Scott and, you know, he can't vote tonight on this because he's not in public, but he said it has his blessing as well.
The one thing I'd like to add is, from start to finish, thorough evaluation, lots of questions by the board. Administration, did they work? I think Rob and his team did a great job in bringing some data together on other districts. So we really vetted out some changes and I'm just kind of pleased with the outcome as well.
I think the system really worked.
It really did. I have to say, I mean, that's one thing about our district that does work and about this table that works and our administrators. I mean, we really vet things out, we really do. We really, before we make any changes, it may be a little slow, but we usually get it right because of that. So thanks for everybody's input.
Thank you.
We didn't take the vote, did we?
We voted, yeah.
Okay, so motions on the table, all in favor? Okay. We have a new athletic placement process.
Great.
Nice job.
Thank you, Rob, for all of the work that you've done on that. I know that in addition to athletics, which is a 365-day position, you know, you're also working really hard with the teachers in health and physical education. And on top of that, you're looking at how you can refine and revise your programs all the time. I know it took a lot of time and a lot of people that you were talking to and a lot of good listening. And I think our collaboration pulled this through in the end for our kids. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for their support. And Tim, thank you, as noted before, for diving deep into this. A little figuring out, but it was problem solving, so thank you. That's it.
Nice job, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so that brings us to our first special report of the evening in our curriculum conversation, Science Olympiad. Do you have to tell?
Yes.
Sure. So it's very exciting this evening. We have some enthusiastic students and their teachers and our chair to support them to see some science in action tonight. So I want to say to the board, this is a curriculum conversation to support our STEAM initiative. You will be seeing STEAM in action, although this is not really new. We've had Science Olympiads around for a while, but we are trying to find ways to incorporate all this into our curriculum. But you'll see the way these students think about science, the way they interact, and it's quite exciting when you hear about their achievement on this, the last Science Olympiad venture this year. So let's start by first introducing these fine people that are here. So we'll go left to right and please introduce yourself if you're a teacher and also if a student, say what grade you're in. So start with Mr. Horowitz.
Evan Horowitz, honors chemistry teacher. I'm the Science Olympiad coach and have been for the past 10 years. And also, I am the Lower Hudson Valley Regional Coordinator for Science Olympiad in charge of Science Olympiad for Rockland and Westchester County.
And he's been doing it for 34 years. Right. Does he not want me to say this?
He started, he started.
He started very, very early.
I was a member of Science Olympiad, so as.
And his dad was his coach or advisor when he was in school, so it's in the line.
Sure is.
I learned that tonight.
Hi, I'm Paul Beacon, I'm the AP Physics teacher. I also help with the regional organization, a lot of the software and management of the regional Science Olympiad as well.
My name is Jeremy Ma and I'm a senior.
My name is Pieter Perez, I'm a junior.
Good evening, I'm Alan Chang and I'm a junior.
My name is Jonathan Mo, I'm a senior.
I'm Carolyn Mathieu and I teach science research here at Byram Hill.
Thought you'd tell us you were sophomore, isn't it?
I want to point out that Ms. Kay, the science chairperson, is in the audience as well, supporting everybody.
Hi, you guys seem right there. Hi.
Snuck in here, we didn't see you.
Jeremy's mother and brother are here, so we can say hi to the family support. So let's learn about Science Olympiads first. Can you talk to us about what is Science Olympiads? What is this club? What do you do? Tell us a little bit about it.
So Science Olympiad is kind of a competition where there are around 25 events, usually in pairs, sometimes in teams of three, in which students will compete against numerous other schools in the region during the regional competition. And if we advance the state competition, against other teams in the state. There are two kinds of events, build events and study events. Study events is you do your own research about a topic and in the event you take a very long test. Whereas build events, you have to build either an electric vehicle, or a tower, or a helicopter, or a Rube Goldberg machine. And there is all different kinds of ways to score that, so.
So taking a test or building something. So tonight you're going to show us the test you took?
So you're volunteering to take extra tests? Extra, right.
And do you get to choose competitions or are they assigned and then everybody's doing the same thing? How does it technically work?
Well, at the beginning of the year, we expressed interest in five events to Mr. Horowitz. And then we kind of talk amongst ourselves along with Mr. Horowitz. And we divvy up the events on what we're interested in, history that we had with the events, and kind of like passing along.
How many people, how many members of Science Olympiads do we have?
We've run 26, I believe.
26 this year?
We run, we run two teams. We usually have one A team, which is our main competing team, and then we have a B team, which basically is consists of mostly freshmen who are coming from middle school from the Science Olympiad experience. And they're basically getting, they're gaining their feet wet in the high school level. And then they get to kind of work hand in hand with the A team to basically, to train them and help them acclimate to the high school level.
Now, some of you have been involved in Science Olympiad since middle school, is that correct?
Yeah, I've been doing this since sixth grade, so this is my seventh year doing Science Olympiad.
My sixth year.
How long have you had Science Olympiads in the district?
So at least 10 years.
10 years.
Did you start it here?
Yeah, when I got here, I brought it with me because I was the coordinator for the Lower Hudson Valley. So when I got here, there's one of the things I wanted to try to bring. We had the middle school program here prior to me getting here, but when I, when I first started here, I wanted to, you know, bring it to the high school level.
You've only been at 10 years?
I know.
Why are you involved in this? Why do you like to do it?
Well, I feel like Science Olympiad offers a lot of learning opportunities that you don't really get when you're in class. Especially if we're talking about like the two events we're presenting today, where we're building rubber band powered balsa wood helicopters or Rube Goldberg machines or one task.
You're going to be witnessing that tonight, so.
It's kind of stuff that you won't see typically, for example, if you're in a chemistry class. Maybe you won't talk about like how these reactions maybe make in the high school. Which is one of the tasks that we have in our Rube Goldberg machine.
So you're really looking at applied science?
Yeah.
Doing it? Say something.
Yeah, so like it brings all the types of science together. It brings biology, chemistry, physics, environmental sciences. Each event they can choose to compete in Science Olympiad covers a broad range of the sciences, such as our Rube Goldberg machine. It includes electrical engineering, it includes physics, it includes chemistry. So you really have to have a good knowledge of everything to succeed in the program.
So let's just get the icing first here. So you won some awards this, you got medaled, I believe is what you call it in Science Olympiads. What did you win? Tell us about your awards this year.
So Alan and I, we got ninth place in the state level for helicopters.
Now, I mean, first, there's regional and then state, so.
So you got through regionals and then you qualify based on how, what, you're doing regionals for state?
So we qualified out of 48 teams, we were in top six. So we qualified for states. Just talking about regional level, me and John, first place in rocks mineral study event. So we had to memorize and identify about 100 or so rocks minerals.
That was the test taking?
Yeah.
Going to take a test?
And then we built helicopters, which we came in first at regionals.
Wow, first in regionals.
Yeah.
And me and Jonas then did chem lab, which is a chemistry lab, and it's a test study event, and we got 10. And then we also did material science and we got 10. And I did optics and I got 7 in regionals, of course. And then me and Pietro did Mission Possible, which got first place in regionals and then first place in states.
First place in states, this thing you're going to see tonight.
That's very impressive.
It's really recognized.
And then along with my friend, I, we built a hovercraft and they got second at regionals.
My friend and I also took a test on dynamic planet, which is just kind of a general geology and history of the world thing, and we got first place.
So I'm imagining these things have been very long to do.
Just me, of course.
Were you also studying here at the time? You were also students?
Flying to college.
Taking your other classes, flying to college?
So tell us about these events that you're going to show us tonight, the helicopter and the Rube Goldberg machine. So describe them to us, tell us about what the requirements are for these events.
Alright, so firstly, we're going to show you the helicopters, which is, it's kind of hard to see from here. But we'll show you when we come, like, after we finish winding. But it's basically, the whole thing weighs about 3.5 grams, which you can imagine requires four steps and tiny glass of super glue. Probably takes more than 10 plus hours to build one of them. We built five of them to make sure that none of them broke on the way to states.
So you had backup on your way to states.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
That's preparation, right?
Yeah. So it requires us to wind a rubber band and then attach two rubber bands onto the wood frame. And basically, when the rubber band unwinds itself, it rotates rotors, which make the helicopter fly.
So I imagine there's some parameters and some guidelines that you have to follow.
There was a maximum diameter size, which changes year to year when helicopters is an event, so that between years you still have to rebuild a helicopter. In addition, there was a special bonus if you built your helicopter like a Chinook style.
Like a?
Chinook.
Chinook.
So instead of a traditional mono axial helicopter, where there's a blade on the top and a blade on the bottom, we actually have a body with two rotors underneath that together they actually fly out like a thoroughfare.
How'd you come up with the design?
That's great.
There's a common kit that's found online that everyone uses and it's very good.
So what made yours stand above that and rank higher to get you to where you got?
Yeah, so at regionals, you can see a lot of people maybe kind of use the same kit others might have tried another kit. But like we've tested our helicopters for probably like 70, 80 hours. Like we would go to each other's house for the entire day and test different things. And I think what really made us different from regionals and also states is, is like, yeah, you can build a kit, but it's one, how well you can build a kit. And also, two, we had to do a lot of fine tuning. And we started branching away from the kit, trying like small things here. Like we would change the width of the rubber band by .009 centimeters. And that would change the flight time by 10, 20 seconds.
So you made some adjustments and, so what was the goal of this, when you set flight times?
It's the maximum time allowed.
Allowed, so that was it. What did you learn about the skills that it takes to do this type of work?
Mostly over the seven years I've done Science Olympiad, the biggest one is definitely kind of initiative. You have to want to do the event. And once you find that kind of passion, you find yourself just kind of snowballing down and you find yourself wanting to do more and more, just to either know more about the topic for a study event or in order to improve your score for a build event. In addition to that, also a big, it helped in work ethic, it also helped in patience and just kind of general curiosity as well.
So why don't we look at the helicopters since we're all curious about it now, and then we'll come to the Rube Goldberg machine after. So they're going to go demonstrate it for us? Not a video, this is real.
This is real life. This is not the one that's been real. It's going to be right.
No. It's when they were experimenting, they were a little worried about the room design here, but I think they figured it out. So the goal of this is to hover for as long as you can do it.
And land on the tip of one finger.
So because they're concerned a little bit about when it comes down, and it will eventually come down, it might hit the microphones. I'm just going to move the microphones back a little bit, just so we give them a little more room.
So as other clubs, does this club need after school?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, we will have, basically in the beginning of the year, we'll have weekly meetings, where we're first deciding what events we're working on, what's going to, who's going to comprise the A team and the B team. Because we actually have restrictions on the number of seniors you can have in a team, so we have to kind of juggle. One year we had 14 seniors and we could only have seven on a team, so we had to split them up. So we, there are things that we have to kind of do to make sure we accommodate all the students. And then at that point, once we get to, we're close to the competition, we will probably meet almost every day, various capacities. And I may not meet as a full team, but I may sit down, so work with the chem, the chem students on their, you know, their lab. Or they'll come in and they'll test Rube Goldberg, or other people will come in and we'll work on tower building. So we kind of, you know, everybody has their own little goals that they'll break up into little groups. So the A team and the B team will kind of work together on their common goals and we'll set up times to individually discuss their events.
It also becomes a very individual process. We basically just go home, spend a few hours every day, not every day, but every, every couple of days, and just try to perfect your, your event and make sure that you do well in the competitions that follow.
So how's it working? You said you do some work individually, but you also have a team you're working with.
Yeah.
So was that difficult for you to work together as a team? Does any collaboration happen?
I think Science Olympiad allows you to use a skill that you don't really use that much in like normal school, which is like cooperation, in which you have a main partner. Like my partner is Jeremy throughout the entire process from the Mission Possible event. And it allows you to, because in school, you're really just focused on yourself. You're the only person that can really guide you through doing well in classes and tests. So having a partner allows you to also rely on them and know that they can help you when you're not able to do something. So it just allows you to bring community together and help each other.
So we'll talk more about that collaborative skill afterwards. So let's look at your.
Yeah, so off while, we'll talk about it afterwards, so. You want to check out? Okay.
Click out.
Alright, so that's the helicopter. And there's two rubber band motors. On each one, there's about 600 winds, so we have a winder that does like 15 winds per, like one time.
15 winds per turn.
Yep. There's, like the rotors and the top, you can kind of see like a reflective surface, it's called Mylar. So it's part of being super light, so the whole thing's about 3.5 grams. So that allows it.
Is there a restriction on the weight for the?
It has, the helicopter weighs at least three grams.
Yeah.
Because of the Chinook nature of this design, it's naturally heavier than the general traditional, like mono axial helicopters. There's also Kevlar strings that provide support for the entire body while there's the torque of the 600 wind rubber bands on both sides of the helicopter.
Yeah.
So if the ceiling wasn't there, would it?
Hey, just keep going.
Yeah.
Assumed.
Yeah.
Have you tried it in a tall building?
Oh, we had to, so at regionals, we, if you kind of think like Barham Hill's upper drift, that's kind of where we flew it. So a lot of, like, a lot of teams, they're kind of worried about the rafters. And we're really lucky with how like the rafters worked out, because obviously if one of those things, it's the rafter is going to snap. So after a while, like a minute or two minutes, so it's going to start dropping down, so.
Should be soon.
Yeah.
That's pretty amazing. That's amazing.
Hopefully doesn't hit this wall.
Hopefully the dumbbell will come down.
What is, can you just explain a sec, one moment? Can you bring that helicopter back here? Can you just explain the design of the top design, what you intended to do there and then why it was the way it is?
Okay, so.
Well, briefly, I mean, you go, yeah, probably after three sentences I'll lose you, but I haven't.
So if you see like the black surfaces, this is, oops, sorry. This is something called carbon toe, and it's carbon fiber. So carbon fiber has the potential to be very strong, but also flexible. So it allows these motor sticks to bend to still stay reinforced, so that doesn't automatically snap when we put these rubber bands on. These two are called spreader bars and they also have carbon toes, so they don't snap.
In addition, this perpendicular fin here is mostly for stability as the helicopter goes up, so that hopefully it stays straight as it goes up, didn't go completely vertical. The goal is that it goes vertically straight up.
Yeah. And then the balsa disc here just allows it to stick, like as you can see, it hit the ceiling and it kind of stayed there.
It's also a requirement of the event itself to have a balsa disc at the top.
Oh, is it right?
Yeah.
So what was part of the kit and what did you do on your own?
So like these balsa materials, obviously we don't have like a laser cutter, because these require like very precise cutting, like you can't do it with the X-acto knife. But as far as like cutting the actual like length of these spreader bars and attaching all of these, like you can see there's very minute details, such as these hooks and these O-rings. And we all, we all do this ourselves. Building those rotors, like doing the Mylar, we had to use a special type of glue and then spray the carbon fiber frames and lay the Mylar across. So it's very time consuming, but I feel like the overall reward of seeing it fly and then doing like well in the event made it all work there.
But were the materials all included in the kit?
All of the materials were included in the kit. So the Mylar, the balsa wood, the carbon toe, the Kevlar, and even the rubber was included.
So was everybody's helicopter that shape and?
So one of the reasons why this design was not as popular in the regional competition was mostly just because of how difficult it was to build this well, to build and balance. Another factor was just that other people just used other kits. For a lot of the top competing teams, they'd use this design. However, it's just very, very difficult to create.
And did you get extra points for that?
There was a 250% multiplier on your time if you used this design. So if you used a regular mono axial helicopter, you basically had no shot of winning.
Now, did you guys use the 3D printers at all for us?
Actually, we did, yes. So actually, if you want to take, John, if you want to go over and grab those right in your hands.
Well, you guys continue, I'll bring them.
Yeah. So in order to wind this, obviously we can't do this by hand with like 600 winds and then snap the helicopter. So we actually designed a winding box. And as you, the two blue parts are there, are actually 3D printed. So what happens is we can lay the helicopter across here, so that we can wind it and then take it off. Yeah.
Have you had a time limit on getting it ready for the competition?
So there was actually a score bonus based on that. If you were able to fly your helicopter within three minutes of your start time, you got an extra 10% bonus. If you flew it between three and six minutes after you got your rubber bands back, then you get a, you don't get anything. And if it took you longer than six minutes to get your helicopter in the air, then you had a 10% penalty.
So all those factor into your design?
Yeah, and then a lot of practicing. The first time we practiced, we were like, alright, let's have a timer, like five, six minutes. And then we got it down to like one and a half, two minutes, so.
And you said you built a few of these just in case, if you happened to it. So they had to all be perfect, and you had to test all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
And how many did you make before the number that you made to bring over there? How many crashed and burned?
Well, actually, we, so.
A lot?
So we made one and it was a test.
You're making it, you know, like it's possible, but I don't know that it's possible.
And then like this, one of, like these motor sticks snapped. And if you remember like the huge storm on Friday and a lot of people lost power. We actually, I went to his house to fly and he did not power. And I brought one that I made. And the first time he let it go, one of its, one of its parts snapped and holding it was failed.
And because the nature of how the Mylar is actually on the body as well, in addition to all the Kevlar and carbon toe, we basically had to redo almost the entire body. That also happened with one of my helicopters as well.
So how many kits did you have to buy?
I think we bought.
Like two, three?
I had three full kits.
Oh, so you reused parts when you, when you had to?
Well, each.
Each kit?
No, we had, I had, no, I had two full kits. Each full kit comes with enough materials to build two helicopters. So collectively, we had enough to build six helicopters.
And you guys have to pay for that on your own or?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Did you name your helicopters?
No.
By a boss, amazing. Thank you for sharing that. It didn't need a name.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Let's hear from other folks that will learn about, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So tell us about what your design was and all the parameters, say exactly to that.
For Mission Possible, sadly, we didn't have a backup, we only have one.
Sadly, but you can.
And it is a Rube Goldberg machine. And a Rube Goldberg machine is a machine that is designed to complete a simple task as complicated as possible. So basically, the machine starts with removing a magnet and it ends with playing a speaker that says the end. And there's like 16 tasks that it goes through. And in the competition, it lists, like listed all the tasks in an ambiguous way. And one of the bonuses on this was have a timer, so that the longer the timer is, the more points you can get. And there was also an upper limit for a time, so we had to precisely time our chemical timer. So we used an iodine clock reaction that I had to fine tune for a long time. I used like five jugs of chemicals. But yeah, we got it right and we'll explain it now.
You said there were like, oh, you said there were 12 tasks, is that?
Yeah, 12.
Were those all required tasks or optional?
They're not required, but you get, I believe, 50 points for each successful task that you complete. So in order for you to really have a chance to win, you have to have nearly all of them. So a lot of teams had only around four of the tasks, which is why, like, so we were able to include all of the tasks, which allowed us to get the, nearly the maximum amount of points. You know, other teams from other schools got a low number of points because they weren't able to create such a high-tech machine, I guess.
So all the tasks are a little bit different, some mechanical, you know?
Yeah, some are like chemistry, mechanical, electrical. Like we have a pulley system, so that's physical, mechanical. Then we have the chemical clock, and then we have a fan blower. And then we have, one of the tasks is have a coin flip. So we had like a motor flip a coin off a ledge and then land on something else, and that starts the next action.
We'll go over it when we have.
Did they tell you what the tasks had to be or?
Yeah, they gave us, they gave us a list of the tasks in September and then the regional competition is in January.
This year, there was a task list and like previous years, there are pretty, they are pretty ambiguous, like use five energy transfers. Yeah, to like mechanical to chemical. But this year, it was tasks, so it was mainly, electrical is the safer way to do this for Goldberg.
It's also a lot harder, because you have to wire everything up.
It's just a design, it's so it all.
Yeah.
Place, how did you come up with the, the design of that?
So for this Rube Goldberg, I was the main person who designed it and he was the one who built it. And when I designed it, so I was really passionate about this event. Like, once I heard about it, I signed up for it. So once I saw the task list that had like 15 tasks, I, I was, the first thing that came up to me was I had to incorporate all 15 of them. So the four, four events wasn't really an option for me, so.
Is there, is there a size requirement in the event?
Yes, the maximum is 60 by 60 by 60 centimeters. And then the smaller the size, the more bonus points that you can get. So ours is actually a little bit bigger than the smallest you can really get. I know at the national competition, some teams will have probably half the size of that. But at the state competition, it was enough to win.
Wow.
Did you get a lot of attention at state when you guys were doing this from other teams? Were they interesting?
Not really, because our, our design wasn't the most flashy, I'll say. Like, there's, there's some other Rube Goldbergs that had like explosions, that had like dry ice. They had like six Arguinos on them. And yeah, there was like smoke everywhere, but ours didn't have that much stuff. Ours had like a balloon coffee, that's the most, the flashiest thing on there.
Didn't out, I assume this didn't come from starting the kit?
No, definitely. Um, we pretty much just, so with, using Jeremy's sketches, um, we would assemble each task as its own separate task. Like if you can take a closer look, um... So every sort of task has its like own wooden like piece. And that was because we would first assemble it outside of the box and then we would place it inside the box, making sure everything's perfect and working, um, and then connect everything in simultaneous reaction. Um, so no, it did not come in a kit. We had to buy all of this, we had to saw it to the correct proportions. And then we had to buy a ton of things from Amazon and other companies, um...
But you have to come down, come up with all the materials yourself, so what are we going to use?
Yes. Yeah.
About to like about a thousand dollars, just to be like a, like a hundred shipments of that.
And Alan, since I was taking my C T during the, um, state competition, because I was in Syracuse, I couldn't go, um, Alan took my, my spot. Uh, so he was able to help us a lot. Um, so now we can get, start setting up and we'll demonstrate the system working.
I think I have my mind too, and I have to know things, you could have a little data.
Yeah.
It was March 10th, I believe, to Alaska.
Is anything going to blow up or scare me?
Um, there's a balloon that's going to pop here and possibly one here.
Thank you.
No, no, it will, it will pop.
It will.
Just, it's, this one's going to be a lot louder than this one, so, yeah. We scared the trenches out of us.
And then Alan follows up with a quick, "Oh, we should have told you."
It's nice that you're not doing that to me.
Has this club and your work in the club influenced any of you on what you want to major in in college or go into for careers?
I was, uh, science research made me interested in neuroscience, but this made me interested in mechanical engineering, so I don't really know.
Mom, what was this like for you at home?
Oh, it was at my home, it was at...
Our entire...
She wouldn't allow it in your house.
Our entire basement became a workshop. Basically, we had like a solder station, a work, like a wood cutting station. Um, we had wires and electrical components everywhere.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I really appreciate it.
Especially if I, we all lost power, you know?
Yeah, at one point, um, both of them were at my house and they both lost power. So then they slept over and the next morning I lost power, so we were all on power.
But we kept working.
You couldn't build a generator after all that?
That was a little bit of a, a bit of a...
How much can you do with cogeneration, where?
Yeah, yes.
What was that to?
It was such a truth.
That's wonderful.
Do the seniors know where they go to college at?
While the gentlemen are getting ready, I just wanted to announce that the middle school science Olympiad went to the states last weekend. And they had a great two days. Rox and Linsky sent Evan and I an email saying that, um, they finished with the best ever of nine medals and seven of them were the top five finishes. So they ended up 17th overall and 39th in the state.
Great, congratulations.
Nice.
It's fine.
Continue with here, that's terrific.
Hey, Pine, do you want to check this, please? What's wrong? Do you want to check the...
No, it's good.
Is this on?
This is not on.
Wait, do you want to go to check?
I think we should.
Wait, did you choose that?
This reminds me, did you guys see the little string where the mom sets everything up on a roof Goldberg and like feeds all the kids?
Did you ask?
Yes, this reminds me of that. Yeah, where everyone gets fed and then can say like, I think I'm going to sing.
Motor system, too, that's what it is?
Yeah.
So they're going through basically a flight check at this point, they have...
And, and actually during the competition, they, they have a certain timeframe where to set up everything and get everything going. So, so, and they have to actually explain individually every step along the way. Because the person who's going to be scoring this has to follow every energy transfer along the way.
At the regionals, the judge who was there would actually film the whole thing, taking, so that he would then review. Because some of the actions are relatively fast, they might miss them, but they would keep the capture, so you can slow it down.
It's two sides, it's, yeah, are you, some of the 15 are on the upper side?
Yeah, so.
Here, so we have the way so the camera can get the... So first, we're going to remove a magnet, which is the starting action, and that's going to inflate a balloon on this side. Unfortunately, you guys won't be able to see it. Or, yeah, you guys can walk over if you want to, um...
It's going to go from side to side.
Yeah, it's going to flip sides. No.
So, so what's first going to happen, there's a magnet here, um, keeping this bag of baking soda in the bottle. So we're going to take out the baking, the magnet, the baking soda's going to fall in the vinegar. It's going to inflate the balloon, it's going to hit a switch on top of this bottle here. And that's going to turn on the motor here that pulls the pulley system and pulls this box up and hits these two switches. And after these switches...
We're going to come on this side. I don't know.
It's alright.
So, um, basically what's happening this side is that I'm just going to pull up a weight over here and it's going to hit free levers. It's going to tip a water bottle that's going to pour water into a container with salt that has electrodes in it. It's going to close the circuit, it's going to activate an electromagnet down here, but this is going to be really fast, so it's not going to be visible. So it's going to turn, an electromagnet, which turns on a read switch, which closes the next circuit that turns on the light. That, um, then, it's a night sensor, so. And then after that, it goes off, it turns on the fan.
Which blows out to a thermosister, which detects the...
Detects changing heat. So basically, it's an endothermic reaction in which, um, the changing heat will turn on a motor, which is connected to a blunt, uh, syringe plunger system, which, uh, we modified it in which when the plunger moves this way, it, it, um, pushes the coin off a ledge, like that. Um, and then the coin, when it falls, it triggers another switch, which then starts our chemical clock.
Yeah, pours potassium iodate into sodium bic酸, which, um...
Which after two minutes, it's going to change color and it's going to block a, an infrared signal that is sent between them. And then, once it's blocked, uh, this balloon here, this, it's going to heat up this microwire wrapped around this, uh, shock.
I'm not sure, you know, it's your nice hole.
The microwires is, is what's found in a toaster, so it just heats up. And then it causes a thermal expansion inside the balloon, which pops it and then releases a lever down here. Uh, you can't see it, and then the release of that triggers, uh, the end.
Turns on the, turns on the light, turns on the photocell, and then that, uh, that you will hear a speaker that says the end.
Yeah.
So do you travel with extra perks when you're there?
Uh, yes, yeah, a lot of extra.
Yeah.
People have like five boxes.
Okay, okay.
So after, once you see this weight moving upwards, you guys can go over here and most of the stuff's going to happen.
Yeah, but a lot of the visual stuff is going to happen on this side.
Okay.
Three, two, one.
It didn't work out, Steve.
It's originals.
It's originals. So then we have to do a bypass.
So the pulley's going over here.
Start moving on the side. So then it moves the waterfalls. Alright, so now, um, so now it turned on the chemical clock, so now it's just doing a reaction. And that'll last about two minutes. So we actually had a, experienced a problem here, um...
So after two minutes, this is going to change color and you'll hear a pop and then the end, soon. It's, no, it's not going to pop, because it's still...
I'm following you. I've got my ears covered.
So it hasn't turned color yet?
Two minutes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Something like that, yeah.
Dark blue and so black, basically.
Where's it turning, where's it going to change?
So it's going to change into a dark blue slash black color. And then because of that, it's going to lock the infrared sensors, which are in these walls right here. Um, and then doing that will trigger the next action.
Yeah, so...
What was the most challenging thing to...
For me, it was the chemical timer, because I was responsible for that. So I had to test it, I had to find two, two minutes, two, two minutes exactly. And then, so I had to go for a lot of chemicals for that, right?
Yeah, I, I think for my part, the hardest parts were the electrical components, because you can't really see what's going on. There's no visual cue, or there is, because like it doesn't work, like it doesn't turn on, but you don't know why. So then I had to test several different methods of, well, what if I change this tiny, uh, wire? Is that going to change something, like with the electromagnet?
No, so it's true.
Okay, right now, I'm going to turn it on.
Yeah, so there is, yeah.
It's not a scary pop.
I don't know what you want to do about this one. You can just take it out.
I didn't hear the end.
We felt very, you know what, we felt very, very, very privileged that you guys brought it, it's too awesome.
That is awesome.
Have this up for personal, thank you.
Well, they're speeding up, I also just want to thank the board of ed, um, for supporting Science Olympiad being at our facility. For the last 10 years, Evan has hosted it and over a thousand students and advisors come to the high school for the Science Olympiad, because Evan has been the regional coordinator for a long time and he has led, um, the competition to Byron Hill from here back to New York. So it's a great event for just the entire Westchester Rockland community, but it's great for it to be at Byron Hill, so our kids can experience the sense of pride of hosting it. And it's something worth seeing if you go into the auditorium for the award ceremony. And there's over a thousand people there getting medals and experiencing science. And for those of us that come from athletic backgrounds, sometimes to go see that, it's an amazing thing that I don't think a lot of people see and celebrate. So, um, we're really proud of Evan and Paul has done a phenomenal amount of work on standardizing systems with software to make the judging more...
Go smoother, unregistration, all those sort of back end.
So we're very fortunate to have your support, but also to have these gentlemen and students host it at our school.
Why do they want to support this?
Yeah, really.
Why would they, why would they?
It's a waste of time.
How much, how much do the kids do by themselves and how much do you guys do?
Like, I, I know there's a lot of coaches are very hands-on, but because actually of the, the dual hats I have, is this coordinator as well as the coach, I'm very hands-off with them. I basically kind of say, we guide the team, put it together, and they're really on their own. They come in for advice, we have conversations, uh, we'll, we'll brainstorm. But as far as the building of everything, that is, that is all them. The study events, they prepare for it. I can basically, you know, kind of guide them to resources, or sometimes, uh, there's some of the teachers that will help out through the building. So that, basically that I'll facilitate, but this is, this is them. And, uh, in the 10 years, we've, we've qualified for states, eight of the 10 years. Uh, so they've done a phenomenal job since, you know, since we started.
Clearly, you guys should be so proud of yourselves, what you've done. Frankly, because I have no clue what it is. But, uh, I mean, all you hear when you have your ear to the ground in education, like we try to do, is the dearth of scientists and the dearth of engineers. Uh, and I think it's true to that, but as, uh, Ms. Kay told me, and I agree with her a moment ago, you guys give me real confidence for the future, seeing what you're doing in your spare time almost. Is just a tremendous commitment to education, is a commitment to method and process. So, uh...
It's amazing.
It's really just great things for you guys and, and thanks to everyone who, who really participated in this.
You guys really make Byron Hill proud.
Yeah, yeah.
Great reflection on our school.
Now, I'm sorry, how many, who's the senior here? Two, and you guys are two seniors. So are there more coming up the ranks?
Yeah, we, in fact, well, we definitely have our middle school, this is basically feeding our team, so we, we have a, we have students coming, so we're...
We have a lot of very bright freshmen, which is a good sign.
Well, the senior, for the seniors, we, I'm sure, I have no doubt we'll be hearing great things from you guys, uh, because what you've shown us here, we have little doubt of that, but just great stuff.
And the board will also get the pleasure of seeing these, uh, four gentlemen on the science research night, because they're all, or the, the seniors will be there.
Yes, I bet they will. Congratulations to that.
So you'll be visiting us again, um, for that event, so they're very busy. So they keep very busy with science.
I thought you meant it was building lift a few feet, but it's, it's really a tribute to your diligence and, and your commitment.
I have to tell you what I love to see, I know you all do very well in school, I know you all work very hard at school. But this is, you're taking that and you're applying it to something that you love. And I think that's, you know, Science Olympiad doesn't even need to be here. You could find these opportunities yourselves and, and will continue to. And to me, that's what the whole passion piece is about, it's about doing something you really like.
You can see they like it.
I know, and, and to take so much content from so many different areas and say, I'm, you know, I'm just basically going to play every instrument and record them separately and then I'll be my own band. I mean, that's kind of what you did with this. Um, it's pretty remarkable to me and I love it and it makes me feel so good that you are taking advantage of those opportunities and having a good time with it.
What's beeping?
Something's going to blow up.
When I was coming here, I was thinking about having slides in the backdrop, but then when I came and I was taking pictures, I saw creating leaders of the next generation. And I have to say that not only are these gentlemen leaders with Science Olympiad, they're in science research, but a couple of them are part of the second grade club, which goes down and teaches the second graders STEAM events. Um, others, um, I think two of you are part of the Enable Fund, led by Dr. Beacon, that works with the cerebral palsy school of Westchester and designs assistive devices to help those kids have better quality of lives using 3D printers, et cetera. Um, so the work that these gentlemen do isn't just with Science Olympiad, even though that's what we're celebrating. I think it really speaks to the mission of the district, which is the leaders of the next generation, so.
Our country needs you.
Yeah.
So don't blow it.
And we've enjoyed it. No pressure, Tim, thank you for this, this is great.
You need to pack up your stuff, we'll take just a one, two-minute break while you pack it up and then we'll continue. Thank you so much.
That was great.
Take this back up again. And, um, if the board is okay with, uh, this one extra change we're going to do to the agenda, it's just, we're going to move up the, um, part of unfinished business, which is 11.1, which is the athletic facilities review. Move it up ahead of budget hearing for, okay? Everyone agreed to have that, okay?
Great, and we have, um, Steve and, um, some of the members of the Chasing Companies here tonight to talk to us about the master plan and the facilities review. And this supports the board goal for a facilities, athletic facilities review for Byron Hills this year. So welcome, and I will turn it over to Steve. We had an RFP for this process and...
Yes, so...
I just want to say one thing before you start, Steve. About 19 years ago, a very young architect came to the Byron Hill School Board to, uh, offer his services in connection with the first major, uh, expansion. And his name was Armin Quadrini. Uh, and over the last, for 19, I guess 99, maybe even earlier, into the early part of the 2000s, Armin was a constant presence at our meetings, uh, always giving us good advice, always looking out for the board and looking out for the district. And, uh, we've gotten a little older, Armin and, and me, over the last few years. But it's so nice to see you back at our meeting, Armin. Uh, I have such hard regard for you and the work you've done and the work apparently you will do at Byron Hills. It really is just a pleasure to have you back here.
You're so kind, thank you so much.
Really.
And I, I came here at the same time as Armin did, but he still has his hair and I don't.
It really is. It made a, it made a difficult day very pleasant for me to see you in, in our room tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So these guys have been working, we've all been working really hard on this, uh, process and, um, field evaluation. So I'm going to turn it over to Armin from KSQ and he's going to introduce, um, the other guys here and then, who's wrong?
Saying bye to him.
So I'm Armin Quadrini, managing partner at KSQ Design. Um, our firm teamed with the Chasing Companies to develop, um, analyze your athletic fields and other accessories and elements that comprise the fields. Um, all the way on the end is our associate from KSQ, Matt Epsky, he's the project manager. George Crock is the... George Kroc is the principal from the Chasing Companies. And Andy Rimp is the athletic planner that we're gonna, is gonna really walk us through the presentation. We really like working with Chasing because under one roof, they have every possible site-related element, whether it's stormwater, management of the earth that cuts in the field, there's the athletic planning. And so we have all that, all that together. We want to thank district administration for putting a lot of time and content into our process. Very, made us very available to get to the sites, to understand the data, to meet with stakeholders, meet the athletic director and so on. So thank you so much. I hope to answer any questions that you might have this evening. We have part one, that's the work that's already underway. And then part two, our other options for you to contemplate and think about.
Okay. George has a copy of the presentation in case anybody doesn't want to kind of have to, you know, turn around and watch the TV instead of myself. But I'll flip through the same exact presentation here.
Is this just a summary of what we were given, the 30-year coverage?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Exactly. So once again, my name is Andy Rimp from the Chasing Companies. I'm the director of our landscape architectural services. So kind of as Armin mentioned, I'm a landscape architect and George is civil engineer complement at the Chasing Companies. And so we're very thankful to be here and brought into the district to help analyze, like you said, I think best gen is take a look at the facilities and do a comprehensive review. So we started that process really in earnest about a month ago or so. We came down and met with Steve and walked comprehensively through all the fields. So this is the first presentation to the, to the board and/or anybody in the community of what we found. And so you're gonna hear some common recurring themes there, but these are kind of the first blush reactions. And so if I start right ahead, basically we'll go through, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Try to get maybe 15 minutes of time before, before my voice drowns anybody out. And then give you plenty of time to comment. You know, this is a good sign for get to it, you know, if I go too slow. But we'll, we'll state the project goals first and then we'll go through the existing conditions, inventory and analysis that we did as we walked through the three different campuses. And then we'll come up with what we have as the recommended improvements. And then we'll briefly touch upon the maintenance and management kind of overview of that. So the project goal was, is really a comprehensive look at the athletic fields that you have, concentrating on the fields, a little less on the appearances and the amenities that surround the field, but more about, you know, where the kids and the students are playing, you know, the field conditions. And so we, we're looking for the field usage, the field conditions, because those two gotta go hand in hand. You know, conditions are influenced by usage and usage is influenced by conditions. So the master plan included the inventory, program use, supporting infrastructure and conditions assessment, not only trying to find recommended improvements, but associating some first plus costs for those items. And as you see, the cost built in, those are kind of the, let's call them the 3,000-foot level cost analysis for a lot of these. And then identify short and long-term improvement goals with priorities. And that's really a part of hoping after tonight, you'll be armed with some information to help you guide your decision-making for what is or is not necessarily priority ranking for individual components. So if I go through, the first slide really on inventory is really just kind of a quick synopsis of your fields. You know, you have four primary field areas at the high school campus, at the Chittenden Middle School campus. You have two primary areas and then at elementary school, another two. So they're, you know, both the elementary and the middle school, they're, they're kind of together. So it's really one campus almost and then field, but for purposes, we've separated them to the two. So I'll go right into the existing conditions, what we've found. You know, the one field is different than the rest. Your track and field out here is synthetic turf and that's a little different. And you already had the resolution that the board passed for basically the aged infrastructure that's there. The field's suited its purpose, I think, for an awful long time now. But the condition of the turf field itself has really had its useful life that's left and it needs to be replaced from the top surface up. It's really functioning pretty well in totality. It's just at a certain point, the carpet fiber infill just no longer is valid to provide you the level of service that you, that you want. And really, same goes for the track. You know, the track, I, I know tons of kids that come to Byron Hills for the track meets. You know, you have students travel from long and far to the track meets. You have a great, great track, but once again, you walk on the surface and you realize, oh, this, this surface is getting quite old and aged. So that's a part of, that, that field is really not about reconstruct the field that's totally oriented the wrong way or anything like that. It's more about it's aged infrastructure. And so with that inside, the rest of the fields really have common themes that you'll hear from me hopefully that I think that I saw, you know, in each of those. And it really starts with the primary uses and what the fields are all used for. At the high school, you can see just by bulleting a list of the activities and teams around it, you have heavily used fields across the board at, at the high school area and at the other campuses as well. So when we looked at the conditions of the natural grass fields, you have your practice area that we call the, no, I'm sorry, I'll start with the baseball softball, HS2. Basically, the fields down below here, they're in pretty good shape. The infills take a lot of work to maintain, they're clay infills. It's, it's a labor-intensive and cost-intensive thing to keep replacing those. But generally, they're not in too bad a condition is what we found. You have nice amenities around there. The fences are in pretty good shape, the dugouts, things of that nature. And, and so the grass area is, is fairly decent there. Whereas you go across and you go up on the hill where you've got the multi-use field where the football practices, and you have other modified events on there. And the, and that field basically takes a pretty good, pretty good amount of use and high intensity. And so you can tell right down the spine of that field, for instance, is it, the grass is worn out.
The next year, one is the 3A.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's 3, 3A. And then 3B is kind of one of the very few pieces of land that I saw that the district owns that maybe is not really heavily programmed for specialized use. It's more just your flex area that's used for various, you know, sports teams, practices, intramurals, PE recess, those type of things. And so that's an area that's potentially an opportunity for the district to look at, that it's not a heavily programmed, you know, sports team field space. Once again, the, the condition is really similar to 3A. Going to field four down below, Steve has a drainage system in those fields. So at certain times, the field plays pretty well. When I was down there, and I guarantee if I went down there now, I'd probably come back with some mud on my shoes. Yeah, it's very wet. It's kind of down in the hollow and even with an underdrain system, it's tough. So in totality, if you look at those fields and then go to the middle school fields, what you're finding that the common themes there is heavy use on fields, you know, makes it very difficult for a healthy grass stand to be maintained, no matter how good your maintenance is. I think on maintenance in general, what I found is I didn't find that your field conditions are suffering because of a lack of attempt to care for them. I find that they're more just from a heavily used perspective. You think about right now, the way it is outside right now, in theory, if you want pristine grass fields, nobody should be playing on them yet. The grass is still dormant. But there's, it's, it's a terrible wear time on your field at the moment. But I understand the practicality of having children that play sports myself.
It's the beginning of spring season, it's the ending of fall season. It leaves you no time to do some of the things that we, that they have in this plan.
And so what we saw at the middle school was a little bit different, but a common theme. What we call MS1, the field's kind of out in the back, there's a couple of fields there that are primarily used for soccer and lacrosse. The stream along there, you can tell where the waters come up because you are in a flood plain there. So there's some mowed grass in there. But you can tell the heavy wear zones, where people stand on the sidelines, where they face off in the center, right in front of the soccer goals, those areas, the grass stand is pretty poor. Once you get below about 50% population of grass, that's when you know you're starting to have problems. And that field's got areas that, that's the case.
And that field, I think, is primarily used outside of school, right? It's, it's clubs and stuff.
Yes.
In our community, but not in the city school.
Yeah. And they want to get on them already for.
The same, seven, you know, seven days.
Lacrosse starts in March, you know, and soccer starts in April. You know? The other field, MS2, is, has a different dynamic. It's the same condition generally, just heavy, heavy wear. We were lucky enough, the day we were here looking at the fields, that recess was let up.
Yeah.
And that showed us a pretty evident thing, which was, you know, like you'd imagine with a bunch of children, they all ran to the front of the soccer goal, that was closest to the school. And it was 50 kids, just a melee in the same spot. So it has nothing to do with playing athletics, that's just a recess space. And so you can tell just by the old aerial, the brown pieces just show, you know, from that. And so that field, you know, has, has those common problems as well. It's a little bit better draining field over on that side. But irrigation, for the most part, is not a cause. What we've found is most fields are either permanently irrigated sufficiently or have water cannons kind of like up here. So we don't think that you're getting the summer burnout. What we think you're getting is the early spring and the late fall heavy use that's becoming problematic just by, just by headcount on the field. Some of the pictures I showed, trying to, trying to pick up on that.
Quick, a quick question. Did you notice like any, you know, there's a fair amount of geese and ducks? Do you find that those fields have, is that an issue with respect to those fields?
Yeah, getting to that on this one, thank, thank you for the timely comment, timely question.
It's hard.
Yeah, no, absolutely. WS1, the field that, that houses the modified sports, a lot of the modified sports. Once again, heavy wear down like the third baseline, which is in the woods. At the edge of woods is always a tough spot to, to get grass to grow really well. Fescues like to grow in, in a shaded area, they don't like to be played on. You know, Kentucky bluegrass does not like to grow in shade, likes to be played on. So those margins are always tough. You'll see those at, at both at the middle school and, and at the elementary school. That field, once again, is kind of up above, kind of on a hummock, so it drains pretty well. The conditions are still evident that there are painted lines everywhere. That tells you how much the field's used. It's, they're rotated around and moved around, but that's a heavy use field. WS2 is where the geese come through, you're on your, from the open water body on, on the south end there, the geese come up onto that field. I don't believe that geese are, geese tend to, if you overseed, geese will take all your seed.
Yes.
You know, so probably you have to chase the seeding around more than once doing that.
Our geese problem has been better. We do chase them and we, we cut out like coyote type of things. My guys cut them with a saw when we put them on the field and that helps to deter them a little bit. But they still, they don't come up here pretty much at all anymore, but we do have them down because of the pond that was.
The geese feces is, it's, it's an annoyance, it's an onslaught in this when you're playing on it. But I don't, I didn't see the condition of that field being negatively different than the other ones based on the fact that that's the one field that the geese just love. You know, I think, I think it's a, it's a factor, but not necessarily a root cause. Later on, I'll have a couple of recommendations on that particular topic. So going in that, as far as a summary of what we saw, for field use and orientation, you know, the planners of the fields over time, whether it was through, you know, Armin's office or with others, they did a good job. Most every field has the right solar aspect when it comes to safety of play. I mean, that's, that's just critical. I've been to districts where I'm like, your baseball field is absolutely wrong because, you know, it's dangerous, you know, to play on. Most of your fields have the north-south axis, the baseball and softball have the right axis. All of them really have the same axis, the proper axis. The only one that really kind of doesn't is at the elementary school. But therefore, you're playing youth soccer and things of that sort. You know, the pace of play is a little different. You can, you can kind of get away with it, so to say. You know, it's a little bit of a safer, safer play. But all the other fields have really good orientation. So I commend you for either good planning or somebody having good planning for it. So the high demand, I, I think I just need to continue to emphasis, emphasize the high demand on your fields, especially in the early spring and the late fall. It's just the grass isn't growing yet. They don't have a healthy stand of grass in the fall, the grass is dying out. So there's nothing to stop the cleat and the foot action from really tearing the roots of the grass. That's, that's really a key contributor. And so anything we can talk about and you can institutionally do, there will be a betterment to the condition of the fields.
Can you also, as you're talking about this too, if anything is a safety issue for our students, would you just highlight that for us as well?
Yep.
When you're, when you're saying that without, I, I would guess that that's not a safety issue, right? That's just an error, turning up the grass, right?
It's not because, it would be, it's not because of the nature of the soccer and lacrosse and the age groups that are playing on it at that particular field for the orientation. There's, with only a couple of exceptions, most everything you have is, is placed in the appropriate spot. There's appropriate fencing, barriers, things of that nature that we found, whether it's the fence situations, the dugouts, there's, there's one or two that I'll show you here. So common conditions that we found, we, I talked, I mentioned it before, it's, it's the wear on the, on the turf. And that requires a pretty intensive maintenance program. I know Steve does, you know, quite a lot of everything that I'm mentioning already, but you have to pay really close attention to aeration of the soils. I know you guys, for instance, you aerate like once a year with a regular aerator. There's a hollow core area, you can see it like golf courses for golf greens or something that'll pull the plugs. That's what you would do in the summer. You would, you know, use the regular solid core ones in the early, in the late season and use the others. So you're aerating, but probably not aerating enough. You know, and all this is to try to get the best potential of success for your.
Even in the summer, we have camps at the, well, at least at Wampus. So, you know, but they're using the fields too, even in the summer.
Yeah, when you look at the users, I mean, you have, you have the school children, you know, go back to the user. You have the school children at all the ages that are playing, tons of sports teams, boys, girls, you know, tons of teams. Then you also have the United, Armont United soccer team, the lacrosse.
Lacrosse, baseball.
Yeah, and baseball, so you have rovers, yes.
Yep.
Yeah. And so you have these outside, you're a resource for the community, you know, and a cherished resource. But with that comes additional demand on your, on your own facilities. So I'm not suggesting to take away those, those opportunities for others, just recognize some of what we're seeing is essentially the pitfall of, of being that inclusive for, for all users. So.
I'm sure that maintaining the fields is the same for us, regardless of whether you have two kids or 200 kids.
Generally speaking, it's a little bit more intensive.
It's just more wear and tear.
Yeah, it's more intensive. You know, aerating the soil, providing soil amendments, fertilizing, overseeding, top dressing with topsoil. I know Steve's got a top dresser.
Yeah, we just purchased a couple of months ago a, a nice-sized top dresser, like what they use on golf courses. So we haven't had a chance to use it yet, but I'm planning on using it. Hopefully, what we're talking about, maybe in the summer, doing a field here and, you know, top dress, plug it, top dress it, seed it, and then close it for the summer and, you know, water it. And, you know, hopefully it, that's how we, that, moving forward, that's what, you know, it's gonna be talked about is how we, if we can close a field, you know, give it a couple of months and, you know, that's how we have to maintain. Without that, it's almost impossible to do what we're talking about, top dress it, aerate it, seed it, because you're never gonna, you don't give it a chance. The roots never get a chance to take over. And then right when you go on it, if you go on it too soon, you're just ripping it right off again, so.
Do the middle school and high school fields get used over the summer?
Middle school.
I know there's the camp at Wampus, but I don't know about the other two.
Middle school, I don't believe, I'm not sure what.
Most of the sports are done, I think.
Yeah, I think.
High school, midsummer comes off.
High school is just really in August.
So it's feasible to do this over the summer.
It is.
Yep.
It is, with a, with a plan in place, but yeah.
So in the, in the report itself, there are some listed recommendations like from Cornell's as a prototype. And so I think what, what'd be most valuable is, is developing a schedule that you already kind of have, but just reinvesting in that schedule. Everything starts with the baseline of the soil. You know, grass grows, that's the medium that the grass grows. What you don't have right now is a series of soils tests that are done every year to say, what's the pH? What's the chemistry of the soil? You know, how much lime do I need to add? All of that.
Yeah, we don't, that's the soil.
That's the one thing in their, in their management strategy for maintenance that I see is the one thing to really kind of key in on. If you can do that and invest in the cost of those lab samples, it's, it's not a tremendous cost, but it's a cost. You know, if you can invest in that, you'll have the baseline information that Steve would need to then say, okay, this is how I, I move forward with that. So overall, another common condition, grading and drainage for the playfields. Robin, you mentioned like safety. Rob, and you mentioned like safety factors. You know, most of the fields have a pretty decent crown and a pretty, have a meaning, proper slope to it. So for safety of play, like you don't have like a lacrosse goal where you're shooting uphill. I've seen that at schools. You know, you know, things like that are just, are big dips. The worst field probably is at the middle school.
The worst one is the lumberyard.
Yeah, the lumberyard field, really, you can just visually see that one really. That's the only field that I saw that I said, geez, this isn't proper or isn't graded. It's, it's harder when you're trying to turn and athletes are turning more susceptible to injury.
Which one field is that again?
That's the, that one you're pulling into ACC, that's the first one to the.
The MS2.
In the first.
Okay, MS2, okay.
Is that the one that, behind the special needs building?
The one that recess uses there.
The one that's the passenger, that big one.
Yeah.
Because that's probably the most used field in the district. It truly is.
And all the middle school kids play on that.
Yeah, and then, and then the user groups on weekends.
Heavy user groups, yeah. And so, so that, that's a good thing for the district. You know, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to reconstruct an entire field because it has just improper, you know, grading, which means you can amend and play a little bit more, I think. You know, permanent amenities, I mentioned before, most of those I've, I've found to be in generally good condition. Annually, you'll go through and see this bleacher system is kind of, this portable bleacher needs to go. This, this goal needs to get replaced, those things. We looked a little bit less at the, the smaller pieces that could be added.
Did you have any, any concern with the height on the baseball field? Some of the viewing sections, there's been some issues like on the third base side. You get parents leaning over a fence there. There's no protection, like line drive type of thing.
The one thing that I saw that was not as good as if you go, that is not proper is actually at the elementary school baseball field along the first baseline.
We, we moved that.
Yeah, you already moved it.
We moved that today. That was only, that was there temporary for them to install it and put it together.
Okay.
That wasn't staying there.
That was one thing.
But we haven't been, we just, we moved it actually this afternoon.
Perfect. So that was the one, I said, all right, that bleacher system is way too close to the field. That's unsafe. But generally speaking, the rest, there's, there's adequate fencing or safety zones.
I know where you were talking about the third baseline, because that one, we also moved. That one stays there now for baseball.
I was watching a game the other day and I mean, the parents are all leaning on that fence. I mean, somebody, you know, it's a line drive.
It's within the, it's within the, the high school standards. So it falls within the safety compliance per se, yeah.
We were possibly thinking about putting just a taller fence in front of the, where the bleachers sit. You know, we, we have to take a look at that. But like I said, a lot of those bleachers are moved around for different sports.
So I'm going to try to speed up just so you can ask questions and read.
The last question on the second field, so the, the fences around baseball and softball fields. Any concern about those, just the height of those fences or safety for not, they're not padded or anything like that?
Yeah, all field fence has, has the PVC. Plastic padding and that, and that's, that's adequate for, for safety.
So just quick, the other thing I was looking at is Jen had spoken to me about it and Rob. So we had in the plans to possibly put a warning track with clay, a 10-foot warning track to give them the warning that they aren't backing up to the fence. So we're looking at doing that in the near future.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, you know.
Yeah, the padding, the padding is something that I think we'd probably get damaged to. You know, not being able to watch on it, you know, during the evening, you know, not knowing who's out there. So that's why I think that the safe, not the safest thing, but I think if you do a warning track.
That would be great.
I, I think it gives them that, you know, that safety factor that when they step on that different surface, they know they only have a certain amount of feet and look back and see the yellow cap and know that it's there. So.
We'll reassess the line drive. I mean, that's scary to me, the potential for people watching.
Rob's going to teach them how to hit home runs.
Okay, so as far as recommendations at, at the high school campus here, we talked before about what's already in the project for the field, the main field, synthetic turf replacement for the track. The one item we list as an alternate in there is replacing of the northern D-zone of the track surfacing with a new synthetic turf. So that'd be page left, where you can see in the image here, it's green now. It's not green today. It's green in this image. That's an underutilized kind of D-zone space that the track really doesn't need to perform track and field events. It either needs to be resurfaced or potentially torn out and you could just extend the net, the synthetic turf out into that area. It would allow you to move the ball stop netting that's out there right now kind of behind the end zone line of the football field at that edge. It'd allow you to move that back to that zone is another thing. So it's, it's a balance of what's, what's the better use of that space? Because it's not a usable space to do a lot of field activities. It's just increased warmup space.
Yeah, Rob, I don't think that's true. We don't really use that D-zone.
We just use it for the high jump right now.
At that end?
Yeah.
But we have the high jump outside also.
Yeah. Yeah, so you have, you have a potential to not need it or a potential to need it. So I think that's why we list it as an alternate, because, you know, traditionally your D-zones are, you know, primarily just for track and field. So, so that's why we list it that way. On HS3B, you'll see what in this rendering here was highlighted as a 60-yard synthetic turf field. The idea of a 60-yard synthetic turf field is that allows you to take all of the activities that want to happen in the early spring specifically, or even in the late fall, and to put them on a practice area of synthetic turf to where you're resting and you're staying off from the other fields.
That's an area you would never have, you would never have to rest. So if you look at HS3A, that's a mainly used practice field for football, up and down between the hash marks. And that's why you see the brown in the middle there. So that's something that they'd be able to practice on that, on that synthetic turf.
Practice football and simulate pretty much any part of your game except for the bomb, you know, or the kickoffs. And then also, you think about the first thing that lacrosse people do in the spring. The first thing is the first two weeks, they usually are out in the parking lot somewhere just trying to teach the basics of throw and catch with a lacrosse ball. So that's another activity that can be done in the early spring.
And I think Rob would tend to, that that's an area right now that we really, really don't use for much at all.
Why wouldn't you do 3A?
Exactly, as me and you said too. Yeah, why would you choose out?
Why would you choose to turf 3B instead of 3A?
It's a practice facility and it's a lower cost. You could.
Yeah, it's just a practice.
It's a smaller.
Yeah, it's a smaller.
It's half the size. So it's half the, half the cost of it. But you could do.
And then to do 3A, you're talking, we do have some underdrainers there, but you have to re-crown that whole entire field and you have to do a lot of work before you put the synthetic turf on it. So. Would I like to see synthetic turf on 3A? Yeah, I like to see synthetic turf in a few places. But so would Rob, but.
Yeah.
We can develop that as an option.
Absolutely. And so that's, that's a lot of it. What you've seen in the recommendations a little, in the report and generally speaking for your natural grass area, like the field four, 4A and 4B, it's basically a intensive or semi-intensive maintenance program where you're either cutting out and re-sodding, you know, the spines of the fields, keeping people off of them for a minimum, you know, at least six weeks, but best to darn near a season. You know, stay off them in the spring or in the fall when you do it in order to regrow those areas and then overseed, you know, till end, top dressing and seeds, aerate. A lot of it's just heavy duty kind of, you know, maintenance, you know, versus.
We sit very low. We sit between 22, which is here, and 684, which is here. So it's all downhill. The district has spent a lot of money in the past 20 years since I've been here on drainage and doing all kinds of underdrainage on the fields, which everything has been working well. You know, there's a few minor failures, but we do get a lot of water just running downhill from 22.
And so I've looked through, we can come back with any questions yet. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll stick to the baseball. On the, on the baseball and softball fields, the potential big move would be to convert the clay infields to synthetic turf. It's done pretty commonly in a lot of different locations. You can either convert the entire infield to synthetic turf or leave the pitchers mound at home plate as, as clay surfaces with everything else in the infield as, as synthetic. Or you can do first, second, and third base. But typically for a high school, you'd usually just do the entire thing, entire infield. And what that does is it basically takes the capital return cost of having to upkeep the, the clay on the infield over time. As Steve said, you had a rainout. He told me earlier, you had a rainout. We get a lot of rain, so that field's, that field's done. And it's done because, for the day, not necessarily because of the outfield. It might be on a heavy, heavy rain day, but usually it's because the infield's not played. Well, you just can't get the infield up and running. So that, when I did Dutch Stadium in Lockridge, that was their big thing because that's a money revenue, you know, business that they can't have rainouts, you know. And that's why they went to an all, all turf replacement at the stadium there. A school's a little bit different, but you have the same general parameters. It's not an inexpensive proposition. You'll see some costs a little bit later to do that. The seeming between the grass and the infield, the synthetic has to be done well, but can be, can be done. So that's, that's less maintenance, less care, more use over time to do that. But it's a much higher cost than probably just amortizing, you know, your upkeep on the clay infields right now. Safety of play, the materials come a long ways with baseball especially to get the right model film, that slip film type of ratio and the material to have the ball bounce the right way off of the turf and to have it just as safe as, as a clay infield would be.
It's more common to have the girls' softball fields be synthetic than it would be the baseball fields just in general, right, from other schools?
It was. You're starting to see the trend really switch to a lot of combo fields that go to a ton of different districts and different communities that you see. You know, the baseball's in the one corner and then you got, you got usually soccer, lacrosse, and sometimes even football in there. But usually there's an anchor of the corner of that soccer slash lacrosse field is, is a synthetic baseball field. That seems to be the newer, the newest wave of, of the construction of those.
And a lot of districts are moving that way, just, you know, as we all see because of weather patterns and everything and all the rainouts that happen and then rescheduling towards the end of the season, all the rainouts. It's just getting, it's just so difficult. I mean, before we came in here, it was snowing and sleeting.
There's some, there's some reasoning as well. We didn't put it in here because in the master plan per se. But to qualify for sectionals, you need certain quality of facilities and certain things draw you to host sectional meets. They typically don't generate a ton of, of money for districts. They generate some recognition and some goodwill, but they typically are. It's not no revenue to offset your cost, but that way, you know, but that's something that, that could be considered.
You don't charge for that.
So going on to the middle school, what we're seeing at the middle school is, if you start MS1, basically the field needs a comprehensive redo, essentially. There's two ways to do it. One is you do your soil testing, you do your restoration, overseed, aerate, add amendments to the soil, you till it up, you stay off of it from here, you re, you know, you basically just redo it, whether you sod or seed, you just, you just completely do it. The other way to do it, that field, because it is a mottled soil, you can see a ton of wear on it from, from various angles and locations. The other way to do it is to change the soil profile and to put in a new sand-based system, which offers more longevity for the field, but it costs more money. Basically, you're changing the soil horizon from more of a clay soil, you know, clay-sand mix that's out there now. You're really getting into more of a sand mix. It's a little pressure on irrigation during the drought times, you know, on that. But it dries out a lot quicker for the marginal seasons. We have some costs in there presented for that. That's really the only field that I, I saw where the soil really wasn't as conducive for growing material as, as the other. Soil testing could prove me wrong, but that's, that's my, you know, our eyes are educating that.
Is that kind of, there's sort of two fields here, right?
There is two fields in MS1, yeah. And we're treating it kind of as one field. There's some really bad wear spots at the goal locations along the tree margin. And that's back to the sunlight, you know, catching the trees. But, you know, it's a really nice area. You got the fields across the ravine, you know, the community field across the ravine. It's a really nice setting. I didn't want to put in our recommendations for you to cut the first 30 feet of trees away from the fields to let the grass grow a little bit nicer.
You can't cut trees at all.
It just, it just, it's a.
I know all about not going to choose it all.
Whether you can get a permit to do it or not, it just aesthetically, it's a really nice field area there. And it would change it dramatically. Yeah, trimming, limbing back maybe, but, but a broad stroke, get the trees away from shading the field. I think it's too devastating to do that to the fields. MS2, the other field, the one that gets the heavy, heavy use.
Wait it back.
The field that gets the heavy, heavy use there from recess and from United Armunk Soccer, from the lacrosse group, and from just middle school play. You know, that field there, because of that activity, one of the recommendations we have in there is, as an alternate, is to replace that grass surface with a new all-purpose turf field. Because that would have a, now you'd have a synthetic turf field at that part of the campus. You know, kind of could serve both the uses at the elementary school and the middle school there. You can fit in with the geometry about 150 by, by 300. 150 is just about as narrow as you want to get for, for, you know, youth, youth soccer, for instance. You know, 135 by 180 is kind of like the little tikes. And so 150 is, is pretty narrow, but you can, you can still host competitive games that, especially at that youth level on a field that's 150 by 300.
We're not hosting sectional leagues.
No, no, you couldn't get to that point.
But do we want to restrict ourselves to only using it for youth activity from now? I mean, if we're going to be rotating the fields and having some fields out of, out of commission for entire seasons, we need to, if we're going to have a turf field, we need to make that available for.
Right. That's, I said before, moving forward with a, a really good maintenance program and doing the top dressing and aerating and closing the field is we do need areas to put those teams and user groups. So if you do a synthetic field like we did in this field, it just opens up the ability to do so many other things. It really opens that up.
So do we have the space there to make it bigger?
It's just not a legit.
You can't make it much bigger. You're pretty restricted, sir.
How, how big can you, can you go? The, the max, what's the maximum?
Probably you can get 160 in the width is about all I can get for that.
Without spectator space.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what, could it be used for, for high school?
Oh, you could definitely use it for high school soccer practice by all means.
It's used for practice.
Practice, not games.
Yeah, your games you'd want to have somewhere else.
Or like you said, we'll, we'll get a price on doing the, up at the high school. I don't know what number it was, MS.
The, the bigger football practice field. But yeah, of course it doesn't help the middle school kids, but yeah.
Even now.
If you turf that field at the middle school, the high school kids are going to take it over. Right? Everybody's going to play on the turf. I mean, may as well just leave it here and let them take over their own space.
Yeah, and this, and this, you know, a football field is 150, 150 feet wide. So the one you have out here, you have the ditch in the back so you can, between the, the track and the field, there's, there's enough space to cheat with some earthwork, to cheat a little bit more room that way. On the other side, you get to the bank pretty good.
Yeah, we're better off.
And so you're probably still only going to squeeze, we, we'd have to look at the geometry. You might squeeze 180 feet in the width and that's what you want. So you want to get 180 feet in the width. We might be able to squeeze that in that particular area, but it might start getting a little bit constrained there as well. But I, I think you can just, without drawing it. You know, one of the, the drivers of this one is, is in part is what's beating up your fields and not resting your fields is not really the games. You know, it's, it's the youth games maybe, but it's the practices. You know, the practices are the ones that are happening. And when soccer's going, soccer's practicing, what, three, what do you get? Three, four nights, four or five nights a week, soccer probably?
More, nine nights a week.
They're out there almost all the time, you know, so.
As much as it can be, yeah.
So it's, it's, for a typical soccer season, for instance, you'll play one to two games a week. a week, let's say two games a week, one's home, one's away. So you're playing a game, so one interval of 40 minutes on that field for varsity boys, let's say, soccer, versus they're on that field probably five times and then at least once on the weekend, you know, they're on it maybe four or five times every week. So you have four or five times amount of use and they probably practice for an hour and a half versus 40 minutes. And so your use goes way up with practice versus games.
The cost of maintenance, get the capital investment to the field, but there's maintenance to synthetic fields as well, right, some level? Just ballpark costs, so aerating, seeding, cutting versus maintenance ballpark, like...
On synthetic right now, just for the synthetic field we have at high school, we do about $10,000, anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 a year in room.
That's easier?
Yeah.
It's easier than...
Oh, yeah, well, we also hired out, we could purchase a machine to do it ourselves and how that would be something that we'd have to look into with the field turf or whatever.
So what's a 10 grand for a field that's synthetic a year versus 40,000 for a field, approximately between labor, manpower, aerating, stuff like that, some, just ballpark?
In the report, wasn't there that whole piece, the aerating for all of these other fields?
Right.
Yeah, there is.
It's probably, it all depends on labor and what you're paying for labor, but especially for like mowing, but it's usually, you know, two to one, something like that.
Yeah, because it also depends on how damaged the field is, like how bad it is, it's all depending, you know, to be reseeded or not.
Yeah. My high school, a boy mows the lawn, so it's real cheap because he, you know, aggressive kid out there going it, but it's different than paying, you know...
But it was more, it was more of the capital, I didn't know, I know there was some cost, it's not like the synthetic had zero cost, is it?
Right.
Does heat affect the turf? You know, like if heats on the grass, it doesn't matter, but like, does the turf heat up?
The turf does heat up. A big difference, to follow up, last comment on the cost?
Yes.
Depends who you ask to. If you ask a turf vendor, they're going to give you a magical document that says it's a lot cheaper. If you ask, you know, a person that does sod, they're going to give you another...
It would be best to ask someone like you who's hired to be a consultant.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, exactly.
The real answer.
Right, because, and it does vary depending on the labor, but generally you will save labor over a grass field. Will you save as much as it takes out the capital costs of it? Probably not, in terms of our expensive proposition.
But even some of your estimates for improvements, that middle school two field, which is one of the worst fields?
Yeah.
For aeration, soil maintenance, sod, center of field, it's a $75,000 cost.
Yeah, that's like a one time.
And that's not, that's a one time, not a...
Yeah, we did a basic score measure by field analysis and says, you know, that's roughly what it would cost to really get a one time.
Yeah, how often do you think you need to, given our usage, how often would you need to have that intensive restoration on a field? Like every five years, seven years?
Every year you would have passive restoration and probably every, that's a tough question, five to eight years probably I would say is your typical range when you really have to...
So it's the same as a synthetic without the daily maintenance, is what it boils down to?
Having a second synthetic field would help extend the longevity of the natural field.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, your replacement, your, yeah, that's why your intensive versus passive restoration, that probably calendar gets longer if you have a synthetic field that you're taking the off of.
The question I asked Andy is if you add the second synthetic turf practice field, it enhances the longevity of the natural turf field because you're staying off of it, there's vacant rest. And so those costs go down?
Those costs, yeah, annualized costs.
They project that. Can I just give a scenario, like the practice football field on the side of the synthetic field? So we said we can do the top dressing in the summertime, but you really can't because football starts on...
Right August, mid-August?
Yeah, so top dressing it and seeding it after June, you know, after the last day of school, it's not enough time for anything to really, you know, the root system to dig in, it's just going to be destroyed once the football team start practice on that other day. So that's where that 60-yard practice field there on the side, where the old softball field used to be that we really don't use right now, they can be practicing on that for a whole entire summer, we can close that field and maintain it.
So if, let's just say we were to turf one of those other football field, the practice fields that we're talking about, are they of size like for youth soccer or youth lacrosse or any of those other, would that ever be able to be used for those as well or not?
Yeah, anytime you have a field that's big enough for high school athletics, you know, sanctioned high school athletics, you can always, you know, narrow it down.
Even the practice field?
Yeah, yeah. The football field, like I said, I think you can get the 180 feet, that's really what you want, because then you can use it for anything you want. It's, that's really the key dimension when you're talking about using it for games or practices. You can practice on anything. A coach might complain that, geez, you know, this, I can't practice, my corner kicks correctly because it's too, you know, it's too narrow, you know, at a competitive level, like at a varsity level, you know, varsity girls soccer for instance, they might say, well, we're not playing on fields this size, you know, we're not getting a good practice of this particular thing. But you also have your primary field, you know, it's a lot about how you rotate the users.
Well, you're dealing with one synthetic field right now. When the season first starts in March, Rob Scott, you got lacrosse, you got all the girls sports, you got baseball, everybody wants to be on a synthetic field because we still have snow on all the other fields. So if you, if we had a, the practice 60-yard field, that's another avenue to put with scheduling some of those teams there. Baseball could be over there while lacrosse is over here and the girls could be using one end, so it really does open, it makes you, it gives you the ability to start earlier like we do on a synthetic field and then also resting fields as we have a maintenance point.
I guess, you know, would that alleviate some of the wear and tear on the middle school field to the right of Crittenham? Could those club teams use that new turf field, the new practice turf field, could they use that for their games? Because they don't have, they don't take up as much, they don't need as much space as...
Probably for the little children, yeah. Because I'm not sure what their length is, because there's so many different sized fields right now down at Wampus, with the Armok United, there's like, there's probably four different sized fields, so...
And they have like four games going on?
Yeah.
Because they play the width of the softball field.
Yeah, so you might be able to do two of their games on it.
A lot of them go about 150 feet.
Sorry, a little bit of this is a scheduling issue going on, because one of the observed components at the middle school is, is because of all those small, the younger children and their teams, just one after another, over and over and over on those fields. So the reason the MS2 field was suggested being synthetic is because that is where you actually are getting one of your heaviest usages. So, you know, a lot of the program on the weekends is centered around that facility and there's other components to that facility. But if you now start splitting up some of those practices and now start moving them up to your high school facility, it is going to change some of your other practices that you're currently holding at your high school, may have to now start shifting back down there, because it's not like other fields aren't being used right now. You're really at a very maximum level of usage. So you're now talking about moving kids from school to school for their own practices and that logistically that's going to add an element.
So, you know, time, I mean, you're presenting this to us, you know, but this is not only going to happen for next year anyway, correct? I mean, you'll...
The only thing that's happened is for the following summer, it's here.
It's the turf.
Right, exactly, that's what I've done, yeah, already, hopefully. But, you know, you're going to come back to us.
Yep.
We're going to prioritize what's on here and look for the 2021 school unit.
Do we have town support on turf? Do we have town, like, the, I know they, the building committee can tell you what color front door you can have, I went through it, so I'm just, this is not, they don't have any say in the small...
We're governed by the state education.
So there is one caveat, the fields that are MS1 are in the floodplain and the town Fina Administrator would have to sign off on anything you're doing for that, for that area.
It's a technical review, not a political.
Yeah.
Yes.
Still an extra step.
You know, it's something we, something we touched on in the report and we didn't draw a hard fist, chemical analysis, recommendations, is what George alluded to, specifically for the field that's in the floodplain, but anywhere. But then the DEP watershed fertilizer is a tricky subject. There's a lot of different fertilizers out there. Organic fertilizers, everybody talks about, oh, just use organic fertilizer, that's better. Well, guess what, it's got the same stuff that the DCEs turn out by anybody use, you know, phosphorus and organic fertilizer, says phosphorus.
Yeah.
So, even organically, so it's tough, because without fertilizing, you know, grass with constant wear is, you're fighting off how bad, so there are fertilizers to do, it just takes...
And the goose poop doesn't count as fertilizer, right?
Yeah, it takes a little bit more than we've done, as you touch on that topic to date, to get to that final recommendation, but there's a real chemistry to it. And that's a challenge, because you really need to fertilize your grass fields. I mean, you don't fertilize them before the grass grows, but in the spring, once the grass is grown, you'll fertilize them, well, kids are using them then, so everybody's got safety concerns, you have to do public noticing, I think, to everybody.
When you see dandelions on the field, we're not allowed to use, what's the name of the chemical? No, I'm saying that's in the, like, we can't use weed in fields.
Weed in fields.
That we use at home, that you could be using next door, but we're not allowed to use that yet.
What do we use for that, then, and the clover as well, right?
We have to let kids train.
It's just very difficult, I've tried some different, different options. I've even tried organic, organic stuff, but I haven't had a good result. Organic fertilizers usually take up to three to five years before you see any kind of a result on them. So it's sort of the first three years.
It was a terrible thing to see in the town, in Lombardi Park, they redid the front baseball field, fenced it in, beautiful warning track, the whole deal. And the first year after they cut the ribbon ceremony, the outfield was just littered with dandelions and it was just like, you know, just was disappointing, so...
Well, it's the same thing, like if you go down to Wampus right now, I was down here today and I was so disappointed because we played those fields in late fall. And just the weeds that just came up in the last couple of days from underneath the clay, I was in shock today. And we're really not allowed to use anything, so...
Is that a glimmer springy out on Saturday?
Yeah, so we try to drag the field as much as we can because it stops the weeds, but in this weather, we haven't been able to drag those two fields. So once we're able to really get on it, that's part of our weed control on clay, I just keep on dragging them, but so...
I have one more question, I don't know if anybody else has questions. The high school 3A, if we were to turf that to the size of a field that they could have a game on, we don't have any space for seeding, do we? Aren't we butted up against both sides?
Yeah, if I pull it back up on the screen, you can see that if you got your additional space that you would need, you basically are pinched up to the side of the building pretty good. That walkway connection in between becomes pretty much a corridor, walkway, and then probably a good sized ditch, you know, in between those two, so you don't really have a great viewing area.
And if we turfed 3B, would we have room for spectators? Because you could have resting fields and take some of those little kid groups to go over there to do their games, right?
It's an interesting concept, actually, thinking about it, I'd have to look at it, you bring up a good point, Jim. If you took 3B instead of it being a 60-yard field?
I know exactly where you're going.
And just flipped that to be on the full-size field?
To slide that down.
You'd probably get the width that you need a little bit easier, maybe get in your spectators.
Just combine it together and make it one field.
Because if you look at those two spaces, you're looking at two fields in the image now. If you have one synthetic field, not two, just one, and just forget about the other miscellaneous space?
Right.
That would still increase your usage by, you know, exponentially from today's usage, because that field would be prominent and we'd be able to use it. So you can really just almost think of the middle of that being one big field.
Could you make it big enough to be another?
Could you make it big enough to basically be another multi-purpose field? So you could play to feel hockey, lacrosse, soccer.
You know, then, like you said, Daniel Armok United and all the soccer teams with the little kids, you can get...
You've got a couple games.
Well, if you could time it right, they would love it for those tournament type activities when you have one game, and I've been through a lot of them. You know, you have a game at 9:00 to 9:30 and then you got the next game at 11:30 and then it's over on that field.
Can those younger club teams, the different sports, can they play on turf? Does it matter or do they play on grass?
No, they prefer it now, to be honest, you know? It's, my son plays competitive travel, so my experience with soccer is pretty, pretty good. He's 16, so I've lived through it since he was a toddler. And actually, at this point, they prefer turf because they're playing now, they're game in New Berge last week and Aron next week and then Pittsfield, Mass, you know, on Sunday next week, you know, this Sunday. So they actually prefer turf because they've gotten accustomed to, that's where all these communities have, they play in the domes. So soccer, youth soccer is all about playing all year round and in a dome all winter. And that's putting turf on this concrete floor, I mean, it's hard as it can be, you know, and so when they go out there, they actually prefer it because they get a true bounce and...
I really think doing something there really opens up for what we're looking for maintenance-wise on all of our fields. Because then they can just come up here for a whole season and we can close the field and actually, you know, close the whole fall season or even spring season, do the field and keep it closed, so the rooting system and everything adheres and then opening it up in the spring.
And changing practices a little bit, you know, since 1990, I've been watching, all these kids at Crittenham play at that one goal. You know, we actually could say these areas go to the other end of the field, right? They don't have to play on one end of the field every day.
We saw that during that recess.
Yeah, nobody goes to the end.
I'm not sure who mentioned it during our site walk specifically, but it was mentioned that when the students come out and they march right to the first goal, you've got that other kind of miscellaneous space, I don't know if this has a, I got a red pointer.
Kind of behind the dumpsters.
Well, that doesn't work for TVs, you've got a TV. Yeah, that area between the corner of the building and the corner of the MS2 field there. Perfect, yeah, but even up into the grass area, you could potentially even do something as simple as a 20-yard by 20-yard square piece of synthetic turf. Doesn't have to be the highest, I don't want to say it's wrong, but it might be the highest quality, but that's the quality. But that could be used for that activity of the recess that's really traumatizing that field at a much lower cost if you just had one spot and said, here, during those February days when the teachers just want to get the kids, they got to get outside, you know, you could potentially just do that in that one spot.
It depends on classrooms, you know, while 7th and 8th grade have recess, it works, but when 6th grade does, you're interrupting some of the 8th grade classrooms. But anyway, there's a lot of space there, there's basketball courts behind there.
The other thing is moving your goals, just, I know you guys move them some, but depending on, you know, what you can do, the more you can move them out, like the soccer goal to where it was, was basically as if you were going to play a soccer game when we were there in March? You just take the goal and move it over somewhere else, you know?
And then they'll go there, yeah.
They'll go there and they'll beat that up.
Right.
So that's a little sub management thing there.
They can use the field in the heat though?
Yeah, sorry Laurie, I wanted to get back to that, so thanks for bringing that back. Yeah, synthetic turf heats up, it gets really warm.
Because they start practicing in August and all that football gear and all that.
It's really problematic in the southern climates, you know, we're far north, it's an issue to contend with, but it's less problematic.
Or at least you can't use it?
There will be days when the temperature and the heat index could get up so high that it's advisable to tell the kids to get off of it, besides just saying, you know, really hydrate them and have the coaches really grill in the hydration. They don't get burnt by any means in August, but the dehydration is a real thing.
But they could always go down to that 4A, 4B, right? Where it's sometimes spicy hot.
You know, people always think about, one thing to consider, just always remember, kind of turf 101, is the worst thing you can do is irrigate and spray down a synthetic turf field before somebody uses it. Because on a hot day, it takes about 20 minutes for all that water to be evaporated and then all the humidity's still there and then the temperature spikes to be about 10, 15 degrees hotter or even more than if you didn't touch it with water. So it's actually the worst thing you want to do is irrigate before they play. If you do it like instantly and then they play on it and they're off of it in a half hour, then, okay, but... hour, then, okay, but that's not what happens. And so it's a concern. It can be mitigated through management techniques of keeping the kids off of it. You know, if you get a day in late August and it's 95 degrees, you know, chances are you won't want the kids on it. But chances are, you might find warmer days in the next three years, or you might find eight, we don't know. You know, our temperature swings are, if we're down south, it's a much, much bigger issue. We did not irrigate Dutchess Stadium's turf field for a reason. The Renegades, the triple, or the Major League Ball Club didn't want anything to do with irrigating those fields during the game. They're just going to manage it with their players. Those are professional assets that they're managing and their people, but they're assets. They had water cans, you know, if need be for dust control, things like that, but they didn't want to irrigate during game.
This doesn't all have to be done at the bid once, this could be-
No, it's a series of improvements, absolutely. So I guess to finish off with the, I'll go back to the elementary school here for the kind of the last field recommendations. Those, you know, in general, are just, they're overused, they're not in horrible condition. The, as I said, with the softball field in the upper left, the edge along the woods, the third baseline is pretty poor condition. You'll see over, you know, on the right-hand side, you'll see the brown, you know, it's pretty poor condition. Most of that is youth, you know, or modified levels. The grass wasn't horrible condition, it just, it's not a healthy stand, which means you need to technically do pretty good intensive maintenance field. The baseball field on WS2, the infield's in pretty good shape when you talk about pitch, crown, grading, drainage, all of that. It looked like Steve's guys tried to kind of infill the corners around the bases, and those grow back in as weeds real quick, so that, but it's a tiny little piece of it. The seam from the infield to the outfield is in pretty good shape. Sometimes those can need a lot of work because you basically get a good lift, you know, built up on that. It looks like Steve's guys are doing a good job keeping that nice and level. The water edge, one of the things that I saw, I wouldn't call it necessarily a drastic safety concern, but where the edge of the WS2 field are lying for play, there's a fair amount of space between there and the water and on that edge. But there's really a pretty open area, you can see in the picture, you know, from the aerial. There's a pretty open area. Two things happen with that. One is you have potential for kids to just wander, not the kids playing, but the three-year-old that's, you know, brother or sister's playing, you know, too. So that's one spot you might want to consider a fence along that area. Once you get further down a page, you kind of get into the woods a little bit, so it's a little bit less of a safety concern. But there's open water, fairly easily accessible. It grows up in the summer, obviously, on that edge, it gets a little scruffier, but when we were out there, there wasn't much stopping me from just kind of wandering right out in the water if I wanted. And the other thing is geese, now you talk about geese deterrents. Steve's tried a bunch of stuff, I'm sure. There's a lot of things you can try to do. One of the things you do with geese deterrent is you look at that edge. When the geese come in, they look to land, they fly and land from an open body onto a long, flat surface. So I had a project, for instance, on, up on the St. Lawrence River, way up north, terrible geese at the downtown park. You know, what we ended up doing is planting a 20-foot wide swath of native wildflowers and grass, legume vegetation. Because what it does is it takes out their clear landing spot, they no longer register the clear landing, and of course, they mowed it like grass the first time.
So right now, we-
Then we did it again, and now they got it. TPW kind of didn't follow the plan. But the idea is you take away that landing, that'll deter, it won't stop the geese, but that is one of the deterrents. So I think you have enough space to kind of do that between a fence, you know, and some additional growth along there. It won't impact your athletic play, and it won't hurt your water quality because you got then that much more good stuff for the water to drain off your field through that plant media that you want it to, at Fort Ender is the waterway, so from an environmental perspective, you know, that's a better, so that's a pretty low-cost kind of fairly simple thing to do there.
So we need a gardening club at Wampas.
There you go. And we already talked about the first baseline and the bleachers that were moved back already, so that was an item for that one. And, you know, that field area, once again, is heavily used, you know, bare patches of grass. There's less, you can tell the competition age, because there's less bare spots in that field in certain locations than there is at the middle school. And at the middle school, there's the same amount, if not less, than once here at high school because the older you get, the more the face-offs, the goals, the front of the goals, the bigger feet, the more- So this is an outline of all the estimated costs that we kind of put together through that, separated kind of by base recommendations and alternatives. You'll see that in the report in more detail. This is kind of the synopsis of it. So to your point, we're recommending that you decide to necessarily spend $4.15 million today, but that gives you an idea of the comprehensive type of-
But this includes the, that includes the track that we've already approved, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it goes to $1.6 million or more.
And we went through the alternatives, so we can circle back to those. Maintenance, we already kind of went through the maintenance for the most part, talking about how to manage and maintain those things. That's also in our report. This is kind of just a synopsis of that. The general assessment, the key leave behind is that sentence to me. The fields are generally well-maintained and not to be found to be important if you're directly relating to maintenance. It's not that your maintenance is falling down, you know, in our opinion. And you don't have terrible fields, you just don't have great fields.
How are we compared to a lot of other schools that you-
On par, if not better than a lot of them, I believe. Further-
I told him to say it before.
Further south you get in the state, the higher the quality of a lot of the fields, as a general rule, you know, it goes with, you know, the communities that, you know, and-
It surprised me when you go north, those all these communities, the facilities are unbelievable.
Private schools are great, the public schools are, it depends.
Like Newburgh, something they have the huge, I forgot where the boys played soccer for.
Probably a lot of synthetic, they have a lot of synthetic fields.
It was synthetic, but I think that those aren't maybe supported by company sponsors or something.
Yeah, a lot of-
It's company sponsors and what you find in lower, poorer economic communities, what you'll find is their aid is so much better.
So much higher.
And so if you can package a roof replacement job with a new field, the field is aidable. And that's where most of those poorer, smaller school districts up north, most every, not all of them, but a good, large group of them, it's all because of how much was aidable. That's the only reason they have newer-looking facilities. If not for that, for the most part, they wouldn't.
Now, none of, I don't see restrooms included in any of this?
I did not focus my assessment on the restroom.
So that's separate, yeah.
So closing statement, you already talked about the almost $1.7 million resolution for the high school field there. Tonight, rehashing, our objective was provide you with information, get the dialogue, get your feedback, and then kind of move forward with follow-up after this meeting as the next step. And then after the May 15 vote, you know, the high school track and field project would progress on actionable timeline. The rest of this report is information for the district to decide how they'd like to move forward with. And so that's it. I know it's going to be a lot shorter.
That's okay.
What happened is-
Having your questions going back and forth is better than-
Yeah, bring the claim.
We needed it to be. And if you could revise the two fields at the high school as we spoke about, joining those two fields and making that a turf field and then a real-size field.
Yeah.
If we could take a look at that.
One curls down, the one we talked about, practice curls down a little bit in grade, but generally speaking, they're-
That would also be very important, I think, for the district, if you look at that and maybe do that sooner than the later.
Meaning what do you mean by center?
That next summer, not this summer, but the following summer, with the synthetic and with the track.
Well, one of the things that's-
Just because that's going to open us up to do so much more work on all the other fields.
To your point of resting fields, if you're, it's a tough, tough task.
If we wait until 2020, it just may, by the way-
I'll think about it. Let's get through this first proposition.
Yeah, the advantage of what Steve's saying is it's that right now, programmatically, it's very difficult for you to say, you can't use this field, we're going to have you use this one. Just that alone is a tough enough thing to have to deal with, let alone say, you can't even use the fields, or something like that. Doing that first, then, makes it much easier to decommission, let's say, field four down below entirely for a year. You know, that's actually an achievable proposition. Without that, to say that probably is a tougher thing. You might be able to decommission it for a season, but not, you know, a spring, but not a year.
But I don't think we could do it at this point.
But anyways, so that, to that point, you know, not pro-synthetic, but that's just one advantage of the phasing that way.
At least we'll have an idea of what that would look like in the long run.
And I have to say, because moving forward, sorry, Mike, you know, moving forward, I mean, this background, this detail will really help all of us, you know, fully understand what we're talking about, so I really appreciate the depth that you wanted to.
Rob, you got a chance to look through this before, or was this your first kind of look at it?
Yes, I did have a chance to look at the material and talk with Steve at length. And my only questions, which I'm sure we'll get to at a later date, were very similar to Jen's about 3A and 3B with the upper, the upper field there by the side, aside the turf field. Those were my same questions.
Will we be able to bubble these fields, you know, and use them all year round once they're there? Is that a possibility? Do other schools bubble them in?
It's an expensive proposition. Not a lot of schools do because it changes the, changes the type of surface they usually play on. Most domes you see don't have the same quality of turf, and it becomes very expensive, it becomes an HVAC kind of-
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Communities do it, people as a for-profit organization do it. The only way they make money off of it on the private side is repeat business. That's why you see the games are 30 minutes on, 30 minutes off, and if they don't program them continuously, I was just working with Millerton, you know, in Dutchess County, and they really want that. But the operations side of it is kind of a nightmare for a village. You know, it has to be privatized, therefore, it's kind of the same on the maintenance on the school side. It becomes, it becomes a new building and a new thing. You know, synthetics can be used year-round. Steve says on earlier, and he's right, that you don't want to plow snow off of them just so you can use them. Can you? Yes. Do you want to? No. I was at a field last weekend, or sorry, a couple weekends ago, down by the Cape, they plowed it for the soccer tournament because they had 200 teams coming in. It's just a sea of black pellets, just everywhere, the snow, you know, it just, it was a mess. And this was a very affluent school. I mean, it was obvious that this school was a private school, that, you know, I could only hope to ever afford to send my son to, you know, but it looked like, it looked terrible because it doesn't clean off nice and kind of easy, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This was really tough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you, too.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. We are, we're going to just continue on. We are going back to item 10, are going to officially open budget hearing four. So I am going to-
We need a question.
Oh, yeah, we need a question.
I just-
Thank you. Take care. Thank you so much. So, starting with budget hearing four, and Jim is going to take us through this proposed budget, looking at tax rates, tax levy increase, balanced budget, supporting our student To date, we haven't had any recommendations in our second and third budget hearings to comment on for tonight, but the budget stands as proposed for the board's consideration and adoption next week, April 24th. And I have to say, I'm proud of the hard work that we've been doing on this budget and being really careful to consider the enrollment decline and the effect on the tax levy cap on our taxpayers. As we said before, our tax levy is at 3.4%, remaining $920,227 below our permissible tax levy limit, which I think is us being really responsive to our public and still providing great programs for kids. So I will turn it over to Jim, and I'm confident that our proposed budget is going to continue to support our programs and facilities. I'm very excited about it. Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Many of these slides, the board has seen before, so we'll walk through those. The budget development process, you can see we keep ticking off the ones that we've gone through. We're on budget hearing number four now, April 17th. Budget adoption next week, April 24th. We have our official budget hearing number five on May 8th. That's the ones that state requires us to have. And then May 15th, we have our budget vote at the middle school. As Jen said, we had a budget-to-budget increase of 1.94 and a tax levy increase of 3.4, and we'll get into the tax rates in a little bit here. The state does require us to present the budget in three components: program, capital, administrative. And again, as I've pointed out before, the program, almost 60%, or 69.8%, actually, almost 70% of the total budget is for program, the largest share. Capital, 18%, and the administrative component, almost 12%. This slide, I don't think you've seen before, it's a new one. We break down the budget just to show you what it looks like by object. The object code for wages and benefits, you can see that's the largest share in most districts. That's fairly common. You'll see between, anywhere between like a 72 and 80% of the budget is salary and benefits, as it should be, we're a people organization. Our job is to teach children, and we do that by hiring staff and then support staff. So you can see a large percentage of the budget is wages and benefits. Over to the right side, maintenance projects, we do budget $1 million in the capital fund, transfer to capital for the cap plan, the capital asset prevention plan. We also budget $685,000 in Steve's maintenance budget to handle projects. Debt service, debt services, principal and interest payments on our outstanding debt, that decreases a little bit each year. We're under $6 million now. Vehicles, $495,000, that's for the buses, bus replacement program that we're in. Supplies and materials, that's the 200 codes and the 500 codes, when you look in your notebook there. And that's basically the hard things that you can hold on to. Contractual services above that, doesn't mean our contracts, our contracts are for wages and benefits. Contractual services are the 400 codes, it's things like auditing, travel, in-service, professional development, BOCs. We have almost $4 million of BOCs expenses, service contracts, and those kind of things. So pretty interesting to take a look at the budget this way. What does it include? You've seen this slide before, all the same programs and services, mandates that we have to deal with, athletic program, extracurriculars, we kept the same, transportation services remain the same, and actually, all programs since 1997, which you can see on our website under the curriculum and development. Estimated revenues, we touched on this at the last board meeting. Again, you can see that the lion's share of the estimated revenue is our real property tax. 88% of our revenues come from the taxpayers. Fund balance appropriation, we kept that the same, $3 million. State aid, we did get a little bump when the state finalized their budget. We're looking about 4.5% of the budget, or $4 million, coming from the state. Other revenues are interest on our investments, tuition, those kind of things. That went down a little bit, but it- That went down a little bit, but it only amounts to about one percent of the budget. Payment in lieu taxes was the big change, which you'll see on the next slide also, because Swiss Re, which was a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement, is now on the assessment And you can see, different look at the revenues, percent-wise, you can see the variance from one year to the next. Again, the, the first one we mentioned, the real property taxes, we're looking at a three point four percent increase. Payment in lieu taxes, because Swiss Re is no longer payment in lieu of taxes, it's on the assessment roll. We see a minus thirty-one point two percent variance there. Other revenues decreased very, very slightly. State aid, we are budgeting closer to what we feel we're going to get from the state. It's still a conservative estimate, we feel. Fund balance, appropriated fund balance, we left the same. Here's the tax rates, and as I mentioned at the last meeting when we were talking about the revenues, these really are the numbers that you want to be concerned with, the, the community. The tax levy is going up three point four, but because our, our assessed value increased significantly because of Swiss Re going back on the assessment roll, the tax rate, which we use to figure your tax bill for North Castle, is one point six seven. Okay, so the levy went up three point four, but the tax rate, which we use to figure your tax bill, only went up one point six seven. Mount Pleasant, our next largest town, increased one point one four, and we had two decreases. And again, that's due to assessment practices between towns and also the equalization rates that come down from the state.
What's interesting too is I think, if I'm not mistaken, Newcastle, for at least the past five years, has always had an increase. I, I think this is one of the first years in at least the last five years that they've had a decrease, and I think Mount Pleasant might be the lowest increase that they've had also. They, they were very favorable for at least two of those towns, more so than I've seen in their history.
Yes, that, that's, that's correct. And also, if, we, we do have a PowerPoint from the revenue presentation that's on the website now, and that does have a five-year history. So if anybody's interested, or the community's interested.
It's good to look at.
You can go back to the website and you can see the five-year history for the, the tax rates by town. Okay, again, proposed budget, one point nine four percent budget to budget increase, tax levy, three point four two, and we just went over the, the estimated tax rate by town. There it is again.
And there are beautiful children.
There's our children from the high school.
And, you know, this budget hearing would be when we would see any changes that the public or the board had asked to have in the budget and there haven't been any changes. Lots of discussion, but no changes. So I will ask if there are comments from the public, Susan, to help put the budget together, so no comments from the public. Anybody on the board have any input or questions or comments on the budget? Okay, so budget steps from here, did we? We have next week, April twenty-fourth, adoption of the seventeen, eighteen, no, we should say eighteen, nineteen, budget by Board of Education, May eighth, we have budget hearing five at the district office, and May fifteenth is the budget vote, six-thirty a.m. to nine p.m. at Crittendon Middle School. That's it, then officially closing budget hearing four. Thank you.
And I would like to thank Susan, and I would also like to thank Mary Jones in my office. The, the two of them have just done an outstanding job with the PowerPoints, putting those together, and the work on the budget, the research that's necessary. So just, this, this time of year, starting right about, what, January, I guess, until the board actually adopts the budget, it's just a crazy time for us, working on budgets.
And in addition to doing all of that budget work, you have the brand-new superintendent who needs to know too much about the budget. So you've spent a lot of time with me, and I've also pulled in a lot of board members to do some deep dive exercises in that budget, costing you even more time. I want to say how much I appreciate it and how much confidence I have in you and this budget.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
It's very refreshing working with superintendent who actually gets into the details.
Who cares what the budget?
Because over the number of years I've worked as a business official, many times they, you know, are big picture, but they really don't understand a lot what's going on. I feel that you really don't.
Thank you, Jim.
It's, it's, like I said, it's.
It's been my other dissertation. Exactly. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
So we are done with unfinished business because we did both of those items, which was the athletic facility review and the review of policy for athletic placement process athletics. moves us to new business. And just to set this up, can I first have a motion to adopt Southern Westchester BOSEs' two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen administrative budget and election of trustees for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year? And a second?
A second.
Okay, and do we need any discussions? I don't really think so. It wasn't really a remarkable.
You both.
Unless there's any, unless there's any questions, I, I think BOSEs did a good job. Their, their day-to-day expenses are, are increasing one point eight-six percent. Their total administrative budget, a little over four percent, but BOSEs is a little bit different than school districts. When someone retires, even a teacher that's in program, if they retire, the retiree expense falls under administrative.
For their insurance.
So all of their health insurance, retiree health insurance cost falls under the administrative. So you see, and that has increased very significantly. The, BOSEs does have a thirty-six-page budget document, and they, and they showed where some of the increases were. The actual day-to-day increases was, was less than a hundred thousand dollars, about eighty thousand dollars. The health insurance piece has increased significantly as more people retire, and that went up very close to four hundred thousand dollars. So that's why I see the increase in the BOSEs. But I, I feel that just based on looking at the day-to-day, you know, for a comparison between seventeen, eighteen, and the proposed eighteen, nineteen, I, I think they did a very responsible job putting this together.
Appreciate your, both, your input on this for us. So any comments from the board? Okay, I'll take them. Great, thank you. And that brings us to board staff reports. Okay, superintendent's staff report, just a little bit more on safety. It's, it's a continued conversation that we're having in the district. Today, I attended a school safety seminar from School Safety Services, and it was hosted by the regional safety coordinator. And we talked a lot about threat assessments, team training, safety drills, and focus on mental health. And I have to say that through the presentation, I was happy to be checking off that a lot of these items were in our lens right now. I have a lot of confidence in the systems that we have in place in the school. There isn't this mad rush to do something because we're so deficient in certain areas. It's just a constant refinement that we have to open our eyes to. Tomorrow, I will hold the last of the school-level meetings on safety. I have gone to all of the faculty and staff and held additional follow-up safety meetings. It was very important to meet with the parents very soon after the recent tragedy. Parents don't know very much about what's going on in our schools. They might hear there was a lockdown, they really have no idea what that means, and, you know, sometimes you're asking a third grader to interpret a, in a safety situation, and the third grader might not know, my teacher tells me what to do, you know. So it was important to reach out to the parents and then to have some time, Peggy's help on the emergency response team, to really look at what we were doing in the schools and to say, well, what is our new lens for our refinement and our, and our focus? So we have that and have shared that at all of the building levels, to, to applause by many of the teachers, which was really nice and wonderful, that everybody still has in the forefront of their minds just the safety of students in our schools at all times. So we just continue to have time to study and to implement. And that is it for me. I think we heard of our.
Was it, say, what about the student success?
We had our, we had, well, Deb Kay gave it away for the science Olympiad at the middle school, and, you know, we did have our, our students here tonight, and we did have our AP art induction, which was really nice. For the first time, we have an AP honor society in art, and a lot of the kids were inducted at the high school. So we're, we've done a lot in the arts department in the past couple of years, so accolades to our students. And now, as we know, our seniors are in the, some of our seniors are in the process of finalizing their colleges. I spent quite a bit of time in the high school today, and students came and talked to me about their choices and what they were excited about, and I, I love that the conversations were very positive, and our kids feel they have opportunities. That was most important to me.
That is good.
Thank you. Okay. And Tim?
Yeah, we're just discussing, I think there's two more resolutions on the BOSEs thing that we skipped that we have to do.
Okay.
So I'm, in my role as district clerk, so.
Oh, oh, oh. Good for you.
So I have my packet to sign. I think.
So they have to be ratified and voted on, it wasn't just the blanket one?
Right, so what you did was you just did the resolution to approve the budget. That's resolution A. And then there's two more resolutions, which are the, Jim, what are these? These are.
And the trustees that are.
Trustees.
Yeah, for the BOSEs board.
Okay. So I have to read this, right?
Right, I believe so.
So you did the resolution, which one is she doing? C?
I think B, let's see, B and C, there's two people you have to ratify. I'm reading here, let me read it from mine.
Well, I think she did B, vote for the approval of the two eighteen, nineteen estimated administrative budget for Southern Westchester BOSEs.
Right.
That one's done.
Yeah, I think that's actually A, but that's.
That's A, right.
It's a different.
That's A. Okay. That's the certificate, you certified that in B, Jim. And then C is.
Then we have.
One vote each for the cast of John Philbert and Claudia Blaser to serve as trustees.
So we have to do each of those separate.
Okay, so I have to do that, so, okay, so do I, what?
So Claudia.
Motion and all that?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so can I have a motion to, to what? Vote. Cast the vote for.
Yeah.
Cast the vote for John Philbert and Claudia Blaster to serve as trustees on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Services for the time period of July one, two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So moved. So, okay, I'll favor.
Okay.
And then, I have to do the next one to, yes, right?
Nope, that's.
Yeah.
If you want to do those together, I can just.
Yeah, that, that's the same, it's one, one for John and one for Claudia, but they put them both.
Oh, okay. We did them together. Yeah, I got it.
Both resolutions, yep. So we're good.
We're good. All right, thank you for catching that. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay.
All right, and staff report.
And your staff report, yes.
Yeah, yeah, just quickly.
Thanks, Steve.
I do want to show you, since we just had the state tests in ELA, I want to look at the opt-outs that we had, the test refusals. So these were the percentages of students who refused to take the state test this year. You could see that we have, did make some gains there. So we have two thousand and eighteen here, and these are percentage within each grade level. So for Wampus, we saw that go down by about fifty percent. So we are under five percent refusing the test at Wampus, which does allow us to meet the ninety-five percent participation rate at Wampus this year. In Crittendon, we are following about the same pattern. It's lower in sixth grade and it increases as it gets toward eighth grade. We did have just over twelve percent, which is more than fifty percent from less than last year.
So do they look at two schools separately then?
Yeah, so each school would be looked at separately, and they'll also look at some groups, so they'll look at students with disabilities and look at some groups separately as well. So we did not meet the participation there at the middle school. So we still have some work to do in that area for the tests, for the participation rate. Next week, I'll give an overview of the impact they may have on schools. We're still figuring that out. The state released something at the end of the testing period, so we were just getting some information on how ESSA will be applied. So we're figuring that out now, and I'll give you what we know currently about possible impact.
Okay, and math is next month, correct?
Yes, and early May, we'll have the math test, and I'll give you an update on those.
One thing that was interesting that you had said, how much time the children are taking now, since these tests are no longer timed, that's actually a little disturbing.
Yeah, what was upsetting this year was, and I'm writing to the state about it, and next week I meet with my regional network of assistant superintendents, and I'm going to bring it up there, that we can have a regional statement sent to Albany. They reduced the testing time from three days to two days, but what we found is on that second day, students were taking twice as long to finish the test. They give a recommended window of how long the test should be, and our students were, it's, in some grades, almost doubling that time, but certainly taking way longer than the estimated time that they told us. So it feels like while they reduced the number of days, that they still kept a lot of items on that second day. So I think that's an issue the state has to address.
And, and there were no times.
Yeah, you could still do it untimed, so we did have some students go to the end of the day. It's very long testing for younger students. It was not just our district, I, my list sort of blew up after that, everyone was talking about that time. So this was common across at least Westchester.
Yeah, I mean, I have kids of very different grades, and the feedback for both was that day two was really hard.
Yeah, so while we're trying to get test refusals down, and we were advocating that the state was being responsive, I think this was irresponsible to make day two so out of whack with the recommendation.
I would assume, even though they took away the stress of the time, I had, add a lot of stress on these kids, who can sit that long?
It does, yeah. We did have some crying kids on day two at Wampus.
There are also different test versions from what I heard from children.
About what?
There are different test versions?
Yes, so there's like twenty-some different versions of the test.
So not everyone's getting this, so one kid can have a sport class, sport essay, and another kid can have an essay on snakes.
But in looking at the tests, it was, all of the items would be the same except for one passage, so it'd be one different reading passage on every form. So if there were five.
Is that a trial, is the one in trial for a font next year?
No, I don't think so. I think they just are changing it up, maybe they, maybe, yeah, I don't know what the reason is, but they do try to make the tests different. I think there's different reasons, there may be testing out items to see, but I think they count. I don't think there were any items that didn't count on the test.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll keep you updated after the math tests.
Jim, did you have another report for us?
No.
Was it?
No.
That was it? Okay, yep, yep, okay. Moves us on to, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Board reports, the only thing I want to say is, the, the board self-evaluation, which we like to do toward the end of the year, normally would be next week, but if we can put it off to the next meeting, because I know that Scott can't be at the meeting, and I'd like us all to be there, we shall be there for that, that'll be an executive session. So if you haven't already given me your evaluation, if you need me to send the link again, let me know, okay? If you can do it by the end of next week, that would be, if that works, that would be great, okay. And I, and Jen, we're at a preschool coffee at Common Town. It, the buzz around town and the buzz at the preschools, people are begging for more.
It was so good. People were asking.
Mary Beth Hoopie did an amazing job explaining what a kindergartner is going to feel and, and experience, down to the backpack for the lunch, to making friends, the playground. It really was so well thought out and presented.
We've worked really hard to not have.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Overlap with the orientation, which is more about the procedure and the, and the curriculum stuff. We, we wanted to deal with the parents' anxieties, and, and Mary Beth, really, she brought in a backpack, and we've talked about practicing over the summer, things that we don't think about, like opening the zippers, opening your lunch containers without spilling goldfish everywhere, and, you know, standing in line and the, at the cafeteria and bringing, you know, packing lunch for them the first couple of weeks because they're still getting used to the routine, and how do we stop them from getting on the wrong bus and all that stuff? It was great.
Well done, really well done.
We had, we didn't have, I mean, I would have loved to see two hundred people there. We only, we, we had about twenty, but we really weren't sure, this is the first time we ever did it, so we weren't sure what to expect, but I would say that the, the, the feedback we got from the people who were there was phenomenal. And I've been hearing from people since the class, since the, the coffee, saying, can we do this at Wampus, can we do that at Critten, can we do it going into Crittendon? You know, they, they're having this, having sort of this, these transition coffees, anxiety, anti-anxiety coffees for the parents very informally at each of the schools, and are we going to do another one for incoming now that they understand what it's about? Are we going to do another one for incoming, now that they understand what it's about? I think that we had some learning experiences from this, too, that, you know, how to market it differently. I think there was some confusion as people thought it was the same as the orientation. It was just another time slot.
Not the back-to-school night, there's a separate orientation.
There's a kindergarten orientation that was a few weeks before. So I think, you know, that will, I think we'll do it, definitely do it again. Mary Beth was really happy with the, with the feedback, too, and she was excited to do it again. And I think we, you know, we learned a lot about how we would market it differently to make sure people understand that it's different.
And how valuable. I took some parents through the lunch line, and the lunch ladies were explaining, they have a choice of this or this, and then they come here, and we have their picture, and we have a list from the class. They don't have to worry about putting in a code. And the parents were really relieved, like, okay, I can manage lunch. You know, because everything is outside of your control with your child for the first time when they're in kindergarten.
And what if they don't like what they're serving?
Yeah. I don't even know what it looks like or where you go, or-
And it sounds like it's very different in the back-to-school night, because this gets a little more personal. It's absolutely, right?
Yes.
And thank you, Jen, for coming. It was-
Thank you for doing it.
It was really their first experience, for a lot of these parents, it was their first experience with the school district. And that was part of our objective, was to get to them earlier and make them feel a part of the district sooner.
Incredible. It was a great idea.
Teacher parent leaders.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, thank you. Any other committee reports?
We had an Athletic Advisory Council meeting on Friday, the 13th. Number of topics, it was a really well-attended and good meeting. Two quick things I'd like to mention is, number one, Chris Walsh had attended that meeting as well, and we talked about security at after-school events. So we've got lots of energy over the years now of keeping kids safe in the classroom. But God forbid, we had some type of an event that after-school activity, where do we go? What's the process? Can people get back in the building? There was a fair amount of dialogue about the work that's being done on safety at events, after-school events. And I just think that was such an important part of our security process that, you know, I think unfortunately, we don't, we don't think about it, but I was going to-
But we budgeted for it.
Key in that. That's right. And it's important. So, and I think the amount of energy being focused on that, because there isn't anything more important than the safety and security of our kids and so many events, and so many people are here at those sporting events. So anyway, I thought that was important. And then, as I would mention, the continued work that Matt Allen does on the Hall of Fame. I mean, there's just some great energy around that. And we had the meeting in the dance studio, and I had not walked down that Hall of Fame corridor, and it's really cool and special. So I guess that's on June 1st, so I would mention that. And I'll add one more thing. The boosters continue to be very energetic around supporting the Hall of Fame and so many activities. But, you know, they're lacking volunteers. They continue to have the same people, you know, running the concession stand, you know, or just volunteering, and they could really use more support by community members. So they've instituted a signup, a web-based signup for different team events. And I would encourage the community to really try and come out. We all, we want to have parents, when their kids are playing, they want to watch the game, not, you know, run the concession stand. So try to get sign-ups for different events and getting rotation of parents to support the boosters, so.
It's fun working on the concessions there.
It really is. You need a lot of people.
And you have to have a student shout-out. I wasn't there, but Joe Saglin-Benny?
Yes. I mean, Joe is great. Joe had come up with a proposal. He had a, I guess, a passion and a desire to want to play under the lights, and came to the district, to you, Jen, I believe, with a proposal around a temporary lighting schematic, and went out to vendors, and he was great in the meeting. I was trumpeting.
He was great in our meeting. He met with me and Chris Walsh and Rob Kostagnat in my office, and he spoke to us about, you know, some, an alternative to putting full-time lights on the field, and we listened, and we cost it out, went out to companies, and he was able to share that announcement, that we will have a homecoming week under the lights and a spring sports week under the lights. And he's our partner in this endeavor and was fantastic.
That is great.
And it was really nice to see his energy around that, and he'll get a chance to play under the lights, so.
He's a great spokesperson for his talents.
Is he a senior?